Seeing at six PM, I'd like to call the September fifteenth regular meeting of the Kenai City Council in order. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. And if you're able, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gabriel.
Here.
Councilmember Winger.
Here.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning.
Here.
Vice Mayor Malloy.
Here.
Councilmember Petty.
Here.
Councilmember Askin.
Here.
Councilmember Naxte.
Here.
Mayor Gabriel, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council, before we get to general, agenda approval, I'd like to call your attention to a laydown you should have in front of you with requested additions to the packet. Action add to item D one, ordinance number three two two four dash two thousand twenty one. Amendment memo requested by the city clerk. Action add to item D seven, ordinance number four two, three two four three dash two thousand twenty one, public comments requested by the city clerk. Action add to item D eight, ordinance number three two four five dash two thousand twenty one amendment memo requested by the city manager. Action add to item J one, city manager's report auction memo requested by the city manager. Action add to item O, information items, cooking at Regional Citizens Advisory Council Director's Report requested by the city clerk. And one other thing I'd like to, just show of hands, maybe, if you would, let me know. How many people are here to testify to ordinance number three two four three dash two thousand twenty one, which is revisions to the conditional use permit? Okay, so if there's no objection from council, I'd actually like to move that to D one and renumber accordingly the rest of the agenda under item D. Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Move to approve the agenda as amended by the mayor to move D seven to D one and renumber the remaining public hearings. And with the requested addition to the packet listed by the mayor and request unanimous consent.
Second.
Thank you. unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Counselor Naxte.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I've moved to approve the consent agenda, requesting unanimous consent.
Second.
Is there anybody on the body that would like to amend the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda into the record.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Tonight on your consent agenda, you have approval of the bills to be ratified brought forth by administration. Approval of the non-objection to the renewal of a marijuana license for Grateful Bud LLC brought forth by the city clerk. Approval or appointing election precinct boards for the October fifth, two thousand twenty one regular election brought forth by the city clerk. Approval of a special use permit to Raven for warm storage brought forth by administration. Introduction of ordinance three two four six dash two thousand twenty one, accepting and appropriating an airport improvement program grant from the Federal Aviation Administration in the Airport Equipment Capital Project Fund for the purchase of snow removal equipment multipurpose broom blower brought forth by administration with a public hearing on October sixth. And introduction of ordinance number three two four seven dash two thousand twenty one, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the Water and Sewer Special Revenue and Water and Sewer Improvements Capital Project Funds, awarding a professional services agreement and corresponding purchase order for Mission Avenue Water Main Repairs brought forth by administration with a public hearing on October sixth, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to any item that is on the consent agenda, which was just read by the city clerk? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. unanimous consent was requested. Is there an objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Next up, we have item B, scheduled public comments. We have Coy West, City of Kenai marketing update.
Yes, I appreciate council giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I regretfully can't be there in person, and if you recall, last time I was actually there to visit with you all. I was there in April and had an opportunity to showcase some of the work that we've done on behalf of the city of Kenai. What I'd like to do tonight is to actually bring you up to speed on what has transpired since April, as well as maybe give you a little sneak peek into some of the work that we'll be using moving forward in our scope. Starting off, really where I'd like to begin this conversation tonight is to really give you a little bit of a recap in terms of what we are tasked to do, what we are working with city administration on to promote the city of Kenai. And our scope really boils down to about five or six items. Firstly, to promote travel and relocation to the city of Kenai, which is where we started with the Best Place to Alaska campaign. Additionally, we are supporting local businesses. And I have some more comments on that in terms of just exactly what we're doing and sort of what that looks like. And event promotions, there's been some promotions over the last couple of years we've been involved with, namely, as you are aware, the Kenai Silver Salmon Derby, which is happening at this moment. Capturing Kenai on film, both in photography as well as on video. And I think it's worth noting that all of the images that you'll see in tonight's presentation are photos that we took this summer of the city of Kenai. We'll be using this both for our promotional efforts as well as the city of Kenai will have access to this for internal marketing as well. And then lastly, creative services, which would include our videography, photography, design work as well. So to kind of start, I think it's important to really address the Best Place to Alaska and give you sort of an update of where we are. We continue to promote Kenai in Alaska and the lower forty-eight. And our primary focus has been on relocation. However, since April, knowing we were going into summer season, we took that opportunity to pivot and really start to showcase Kenai to travelers. And so what that looked like is, you know, whereas our prior campaigns were focused on relocation, trying to really promote Kenai to families or businesses who would see the city as an opportunity to start a business or to raise their family. We decided to really target travelers who were in the state or who were coming to Alaska. So we took a highly targeted approach this time. And we used geofence technology to specifically advertise to travelers that were in state. And so what that looks like is we were targeting RV rental dealers, RV campgrounds, campgrounds within the state of Alaska, and we were delivering advertising to attract travelers who would potentially add Kenai to their itinerary. And we did that through a series of photos and videos to really showcase the adventure and recreational opportunities that are in and around Kenai. And so these are the cities or the areas within the state that we were actually targeting with this geofence campaign. Hopefully, you can see this map. I don't know how clear that'll come on your screen. But we wanted to capture people who were already there. We knew we had a very short amount of time to do this, seeing as we pivoted right around May timeframe, and we knew people had already made their their travel plans to Alaska. And in essence, we were targeting all travelers eighteen and older. We wanted to really see if there was a way that we could increase the likelihood that people who maybe say driving to Homer or going to Seward or vice versa, you know, heading, heading up north. Maybe they would add Kenai to their itinerary, bypass, you know, heading straight down to Homer and turn in either for a night or a couple of nights. And always, whenever we are engaged in any kind of travel marketing like this, there's a few things that we're looking at and how we track the success of our campaigns. It's really difficult to sort of create a dot-to-dot explanation and say, okay, they saw an ad. We know that that turned into some sort of behavior. But really, what we look at long term is, was there an increase in sales tax revenue from retail, from restaurants, from bars and hotels during the time that we were advertising? And so it may be a few months or more before we're able to see if any of our work had any significant effect. However, we can show you the numbers tonight to give you an idea of really what that, you know, what that exposure looked like. And we continued our US-wide campaign like we were doing before. You know, really, this time around, we're trying to raise awareness of Kenai as a travel destination with the potential hope that anybody who was making plans this summer to be in Alaska, that they again would add Kenai to their itinerary. We were also continuing to promote our relocation campaign, more so at the beginning of the period in April and pivoting here in August as well. And we continued to target, while we were continuing to target the lower forty-eight as a whole, there was primary emphasis as last time on California, Oregon, and Washington, which are those states where we detect a higher likelihood of people to relocate businesses or families. So this gives you an idea really of the success from a US standpoint. Now, what's represented here with these states is of those people who were visiting the website, the I Love Kenai website, where did the majority of that traffic come from? Not surprisingly, the West Coast, which are those states we're primarily targeting, we saw the majority of traffic as well as Alaska and Texas. And you can see there's sort of an even distribution with the remaining states in the lower forty-eight. So I'd like to show you our total campaign performance from July to August. I'm sorry, from April to August. And then I'd also like to break that down a little bit more specifically to the video campaigns, because I think there's some really interesting data points there. Our total reach for our campaign as a whole, we reached seven hundred and forty-five thousand people. Of that, we were able to deliver ads one million and six hundred thousand, or just above one million, six hundred thousand times. So if you want to try and calculate the math here, we reached seven hundred and forty-five thousand people, and many of those people were able to see the ads more than once. That's really what we want. We like to try and deliver those ads more frequently so that it has a bigger and lasting impression. Now, while we weren't really targeting these individuals to come visit the I Love Kenai website, we were able to bring them to the website, and there was eighty-eight hundred page views, meaning that's how many times the website was viewed. Again, we were trying to raise awareness, meaning we wanted them to see and hear and learn about Kenai. We were not trying to drive them to the website necessarily, and yet they still came. And I don't know if you can see this bar very well, but what it says is pages per session. That means every time that somebody did visit the website, on average, they were looking at about three pages, which is pretty remarkable. In general, a lot of people are pretty busy. They'll hit a website, maybe look at one or two pages, and then they'll go somewhere else in their journey online. We were able to, on average, at least get them to look at three pages on the I Love Kenai website. And in terms of the percentage of traffic that we would consider to be new users of that website, as opposed to people who've already been to the website, we call those return users, eighty-seven percent of those were new. So we reached quite a few people who had never heard of I Love Kenai and who potentially had never heard of Kenai either. So to go a little deeper into our campaign performance, I want to really focus on the videos. You know, we, we feel like the video component of our ad campaigns are very impactful, and the data really shows that. So of that seven hundred and forty-five thousand people that we reached, three hundred and fifty-four thousand of them were reached with video ads. In terms of those total impressions, about half of those impressions came from video ads. And in terms of people who actually watched the videos, there was about just under three hundred and forty thousand plays, meaning the videos that we were showcasing were seen three hundred and forty thousand times. We feel pretty good about that performance. We certainly are looking forward to showcasing more videos, and the work that we were doing this summer will give us that opportunity. I'll give you a sneak peek. It's something that we did create here a little bit later, and you kind of get an understanding of where we're going in terms of promoting the city. So I found this particular part of our campaign to be really interesting. We looked at demographics to see in terms of those who are responding to the advertising and the promotions that we're doing, how does that break down from an age and gender standpoint? And probably what was most interesting to us is the age group that seemed to be responding to the ads, seeing the ads, both in-state and nationally. The largest group was ages twenty-five to thirty-four. Now, I want to kind of point something out here, because while we were targeting the lower forty-eight, the greater emphasis from May to August was actually people within the state of Alaska, specifically travelers, RVers, people at campgrounds. And so to see this age group who we, you know, were delivering ads to and to see them responding to it, that to us was actually a curious data point. We expected ages forty-five and older certainly to be a larger part of this mix. But it does show us that in terms of this Gen Z and millennial age group of travelers, we were able to introduce Kenai to them, and they responded to it. And not surprisingly, the gender breakdown was about even between men and women. You know, leaned a little bit more towards male, but you know, it's really split down the middle. So where we go from here in terms of continuing to promote the city of Kenai, we are going to pivot back to our nationwide approach. We are certainly going to start preparing for next season with messaging to potentially capture travelers as they're making their plans right now. At the same time, we'll continue to promote relocation, both for businesses and families. So this next component of our scope, business marketing, this is actually something that I believe sort of started with the last time that I was there in April to present to council. There were a couple of, I'd say, questions that were asked after my session. One of those by councilmember Glenn Dunning, who was asked if there was a way that maybe we could help contribute to some of the efforts going on in Old Town Kenai, both from a revitalization standpoint, as well as potentially lending our services in some other ways. And another comment that was made by councilmember Winger as far as doing virtual tours, and I interpreted that as how can we showcase businesses in Kenai in a way that can help them sustain themselves and showcase what's available in Kenai to travelers, people who are looking to relocate? And one of the things that we're working with administration is how can we lend our talents and abilities to act as an additional messaging platform to the business community, as well as how can we lend our talents to give local businesses the tools that they need to thrive? And this summer, we had an opportunity to do that. While I was there in Kenai in July, John Taylor was there from May to August. We actually, with the help of the, the Kenai Chamber of Commerce, we hosted a social media seminar, which really was meant to educate and inform businesses on how they can use social media for their own promotion, their own sales efforts, giving them some best practices and some, some great tips on how to utilize this medium for their purposes. We'd never done this before in Kenai. I was really concerned that we might not have that big of a turnout. We were actually really delighted. I'd say it was like maybe twenty-five, twenty-six entrepreneurs and business owners who showed up, stayed through the entire seminar. We had a really great QA session as well after that. And it felt like it was a really great response. We certainly enjoyed being able to do that. And so that was us being able to really kind of kick off this whole concept of aiding and supporting Kenai businesses moving forward. Certainly, there's many other things that we can do, and there's conversations with administration right now on how we can do that throughout the remainder of our scope this year. Of course, event promotions, I mentioned this before, we do have the Kenai Silver Salmon Derby underway right now. We're really delighted with the amount of sponsors that we have this year. We were able to generate over thirteen thousand dollars in sponsorships, which is just a tremendous amount. And as you can see from some of the logos here on the poster, we've got some, some new players who are actually supporting this event. And this is actually a fifty percent increase over two thousand twenty. We're excited to see what ticket sales look like this year. Already just from the activity and the engagement that we see online, we feel like there's quite a bit more buzz this year than there was last year. I think we're improving on that year over year. And we were able to really continue to push the story of the Kenai Silver Salmon Derby nationally to some additional media outlets. I know that the Anchorage Daily News, KSRM, KDLL, and the Peninsula Clarion picked up on the story. We were really excited to see Fishing Wire pick up the story and Yahoo and Market Watch. And this is just a small sampling of, of some of the others that picked up on this story. We want to continue to build this. We really do think that the Kenai Silver Salmon Derby is unique. It's special. It's a great community event, and you know, we look forward to continuing to build on that momentum next year as well. So this, I think, is probably one of the things we're really proud of. As we were assessing what the needs were for the city, while we needed to be able to represent the city in photos and in video, there was also a need for the city to be able to have access to photos that they could use for marketing purposes. And as I mentioned, every photo that you've seen in the presentation so far were photos that we took this summer. You probably recognize quite a few of those. And we're really delighted with the quality of the photos that we were able to capture this year, being able to showcase the beauty of Kenai in ways that perhaps it hadn't been captured before. This one's personally one of my favorites. This is Dove and Speck Park. It looks amazing. This also, I think, looks rather magical here. And as we look to utilize these photo and video assets moving forward, some of this will be in advertising, some of this will be used for the purposes of the city. In any case, these are some really great quality assets that can be used moving forward. Really great shots of municipal buildings, as well as the Kenai Chamber and Visitor Center here, some fishing from, from the banks of the Kenai, and some photos of dip net season in ways that maybe it hadn't been captured before. And my personal favorite here is just a beautiful, beautiful picture of the beach with the volcanoes and mountains in the background. So as we move forward in our scope this year, we're going to continue promoting the Best Place to Alaska. It's what I shared with you. We do have some conversations to have with the administration. Long term, our goal is to present the city of Kenai as a year-round destination. So we want to start looking at how can we promote the city of Kenai for winter travel potentially, as well as what can we showcase about all four seasons that can really pique the curiosity and the interest of families and businesses that are looking to relocate? We will continue to expand our outreach and support of local businesses, and we'll continue to promote citywide events like we have. Now, as I mentioned to you, I do want to end off tonight with, with actually a a kind of a sneak peek of something that we've worked on. And I'm hoping that as we, we play this video for you, you'll be able to see it on your screen and hear the audio effectively. There may be some slight delays on your end, but I can assure you that what you see in video is, is actually pretty engaging. So I'm going to go ahead and hit play and let you guys get a chance to see this. So that is one of a handful of videos that we are working on to promote the city of Kenai. As you can see, this definitely has a, a sort of a leaning towards summer activities. We want to start using this immediately for people who are planning their summer trips next year. We are looking at creating a winter version of that as well as we start to promote the city of Kenai as a winter destination. And so I'd like to thank you, council, once again, for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I'm certainly available for questions if you have some.
Thank you, Mr. West. Any questions? Okay. Any questions on the body for Mr. West? Councilman or Winger?
Yes, Mr. West, I just would like to say thank you for that presentation. Some of the things that I heard you say is wanting to promote winter travel in all four seasons. One thing to look at would be promoting the birding. There are a lot of people that travel through for the migrating birds. So that might be an area. We do have that bird viewing station that you would be able to capture with that. And then on the, as far as the video goes, I would like to see more animals. I'd like to see not just the bear at the end, but I'd like to see caribou and eagles and fireweed, and I think those are a lot of symbolic items to our area. So I just would like to say thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments, and you know, the, the birding activity there in Kenai is actually something that we have discussed. One of the things that we have internally discussed is how can we put Kenai on the map for birders, particularly through the Audubon Society? And looking at, is there a way that in our future photo projects, can we grab more footage of the birds there in Kenai during the summertime? Now, in terms of the lack of animals in that particular video, you know, we want to try and showcase more. I will point out, and maybe this is just because of the time of year that I came. I've been to Kenai now seven times. I've been there every season. I always run across moose. I've seen the caribou quite a few times. When I was there in July, I did not see a single moose in Kenai. I had to drive outside of the city quite a ways. And I don't know if that's just because of the activity from dip netting, or maybe what would, you know, what would cause that. But it was pretty unique to me. It stood out that I didn't see moose this time around. But you know, point taken. We will definitely try to showcase more wildlife while we're, while we're moving forward.
Yeah, and on that note, possibly consider, you know, beluga whales when they come through the river, which are pretty spectacular, and the seals that are down there in the river. Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, I agree with councilmember Winger and her comment about promoting birding. That's also, does bring a lot of people to the area. A good contact for you would be Todd Eskelen with Kenai Wildlife Refuge. You know, they, they interfaced and were one of the partners with the Kenai Bird Club and, and you know, others for the Tarbarks Wildlife Viewing Platform. And so he would be a good person. And so he would be a good person to coordinate with that. He's also doing a, like a hummingbird banding project on the peninsula now. And I do want to say that I appreciate all the data that you brought. And I think it's, you know, quite impressive, the outreach that you've done, and like a lot of the ideas and, you know, the media that you're using, and definitely support the way that this is moving forward. Thanks a bunch, Mr. West.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Glenn Denning.
Yeah, just a question about the impact of our PU fishery on promoting Kenai as a unique destination. In the prime season of July, of course, our beaches are inundated with paying customers. And does that influence how we promote our beach and our waterfront presentation in the shoulder season, which would exclude July?
Well, I don't know if that's a question or a comment. And I think maybe what you're addressing is that the beaches and the fishing activity in July because of dip netting is maybe already either at capacity, or how that might impact how we promote fishing for the other seasons. I would love to see shoulder season be promoted for fishing. Certainly, the Kenai Silver Salmon Derby, I think, to a certain degree does that. But, you know, once the dip netters leave town, then there's a really great opportunity there for additional fishing. I don't know, like you said, I don't know if that was a question, and so I don't really know how to answer it, but I do think that it's certainly something that we can look at moving forward and how we responsibly promote that.
The question was, how do we promote our beaches when PU fishery takes up the prime
aspect of our waterfront presentation? How do we do this? The PU fishery impacts the presentation of our city. And so far in the videos, I see well-represented, attractive scenes, individuals and groups recreating. But if they show up in July and expect solitude or a semi-private experience, they're going to be greatly disappointed. Somehow, we have to represent that the PU fishery is involved in our summer activities.
Thank you for the clarification. I understand what you're addressing now. I think there needs to be some storytelling about what to expect in terms of the beaches, particularly different times of the year. And I think as we, as marketers, educate the public on all the great things that Kenai has to offer, if somebody is coming, say specifically for the beach, or expecting to, you know, maybe see a pristine beach during the month of July, then we need to make them aware of this really unique phenomenon that happens there in Kenai every year. I'll tell you, that was the first time I had the opportunity to experience dip netting. I'd heard quite a few stories, positive and negative, about what to expect. And, you know, while it was a pretty amazing spectacle, on South Beach at least, I was able to go on a really great walk on the beach without encountering any dip netters. And, you know, even on the north side of the beach, I was expecting much more based on the stories that I had heard. Now, putting aside July, I think if we do storytelling about July, then perhaps we can prepare travelers for what they're going to experience. Having been to Kenai again every season and had the opportunity to enjoy the beach every time I go there, there's 11 months out of the year where the beach is just spectacular. And so our work will be to prepare people for July, but to invite them to come and enjoy the beach any time of the year that they can.
Any other questions? Councilmember next then.
Thank you. I'd like to expand on the beach just a little bit. And you kind of mentioned it, they're all year round, and the wintertime's kind of cool down there, too, when there's shelves of ice, and you can climb on it and all of that. Great picture opportunities. But I guess during July, you know, personally, I don't go down there myself, but, you know, if I want to go to the beach, I would go out toward Nikiski to the Captain Cook Park, or up in there, there's beaches up there. And it's not in Kenai, granted, but you have to go through Kenai probably twice to get there. So it's kind of an alternative if somebody is looking for that. And I'm not so sure about the South Beach. That's a possibility there, but I'm not sure if that's getting too far flung to suggest, you know, associated beaches.
So I think it's important that we actually bring attention to surrounding areas as well as Kenai. All along, we've considered Kenai to be the ultimate launchpad for your vacation on the Kenai Peninsula. And so if you come to Kenai by way of the airport and you stay in Kenai, you're just a short drive from many of the greatest attractions that are there on the peninsula. I, while I was there in July, I actually had the chance to go to Captain Cook Park for the first time. It was beautiful. I did go down to the beach, so I know what you're referring to. I don't think that that's too much to ask of people who are looking for, say, a more pristine secluded experience during the month of July. South Beach, again, was actually really nice, and I didn't encounter hardly any, I don't think I encountered any dip netters while I was down there. So I think in terms of promoting beaches, our main emphasis will always be on the beaches there in Kenai. But I do think that through storytelling and educating, we can let them know about the phenomenon of dip netting that occurs in July, and where there are some additional beaches nearby that they can go to if they're looking for, you know, a nice straw on the beach, or they want to go throw a frisbee or something like that.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from Mr. West? Seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation, and look forward to maybe the additional data that you had spoken about, you know, a little bit regarding sales tax on the effort to get folks to come to Kenai. Thank you, Mr. West.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight.
Next up, we're on item C, Unscheduled Public Comment. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time on any item that is not on the agenda or consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into public hearings, and we did move ordinance number 3243-2021 to D1, so that's what we'll lead off with here. Amending Kenai Municipal Code 14.20.150, conditional use permits to clarify roles and responsibilities of applicants, the planning director, and the planning commission in the conditional use process and make housekeeping changes. Pleasure, Council, Vice Mayor Winger.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Move to enact ordinance number 3243-2021.
Second.
Is there anybody in the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3243-2021? Yeah, please come forward if you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Jim Richardson. I'm the property owner at 1543, is that correct? 1015 Angler Drive. I'm speaking in support of the ordinance. I think it will be a help to not just people, but also the property owners, but it'd also be a help to the city in trying to make reasonable enforcement of conditional use permits. I am the unfortunate adjacent property owner to probably the most notorious conditional use permit on Angler Drive. You had a meeting, or people came in and spoke about that a couple of times ago. If you wanted to listen to the type of concerns that people have, I'd encourage you to listen to several recent tapes of meeting this spring on conditional use permit on Dolichek, one at 1050 Angler Drive, and in last week's meeting of planning and zoning. A lot of people got up and spoke about the concerns that they had. And those concerns and our experience over the last several years is why people upriver live in fear of the conditional use permit process. I guess we have tried to work over the last several years. To be fair, we had a conditional use permit that was in place, and this is an old one. And we didn't have any problem for more than 15 years. And I knew the person left the state and gave it over to somebody to manage, and we've had just a really difficult time over the last three years. So, and I'd encourage you to make sure that you clarify what conditions in a conditional use permit, what conditions are going to be allowed, and specify those. And explain how these are compatible with residential activities in the area, and then what is going to be your process, what does it take to revoke a permit that's operated? And after listening to some of the discussions from a week ago, where people that came to you and supporting the idea of not allowing a violation, stipulation, the city came up with that. If a conditional use permit is given for certain things, does that mean that an operator can do whatever they want forever? They don't have anything to do with the activities that were initially lined out on the program? So I appreciate the chance to address you on these matters. I really support this activity, and appreciate your engagement on trying to make this process better, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Richardson?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance 3243-2021? There we go.
My name is Charlotte Coates. I reside at 385 Dulchuck Lane, and I am in support of the ordinance to improve the conditional use permit process. I believe the CUP's process needs to be changed to include more specific guidelines and rules so that property owners and residents of neighborhoods have protection when they are moving into a neighborhood or purchasing property in a neighborhood so that they know what kind of place they're going to be living in and what to expect that goes on around them. And I think that it's really helpful when property owners can rely on the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider, when they grant a conditional use permit, how it will affect that area and the people living in that area. Will it change the nature of that area? Will it help improve it? Or will they consider the Kenai residents' wishes who live in that area, or are they going to disregard them? So I think this is a really great thing, that this conditional use permit process can be improved and tweaked a little bit to help just improve the process for everyone, for people moving into a neighborhood and for people already living there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Coates? Seeing none, thank you.
Hi there, Ron Rogalski. 945 Ames Road, 1003 Angler, I own property, Angling back. First of all, I want to thank the mayor for leading the pledge and having that. So rare these days that you see that. I want to thank all of you for doing what you do, because I know how much effort it is and how much you put out that you're not compensated for. Totally support the new ordinance. Very good. Couple of things that I might add to it is just in looking forward, is one of the issues that has came up and one of the questions, oh, by the way, I watched the video from two weeks ago, and, gosh, you guys had fun. But that said, some, what she just said, some normalization of the process, control of the process, but also the biggest thing that I've always questioned, and we still question is teeth, teeth in the process. What happens when someone is not following their deal? What happens when they're not following their, when their permit and going above and beyond and outside the lines, and they're not coloring inside the lines? How do you make them go back inside the lines? Or how do you give them a new set of colors? Right? And giving them a new set of colors is not always the right answer, because, you know, then the permit goes to this instead of what it was when it was issued. And there's a reason that there's a zoning, and there's a reason there's a master plan, there's a reason that there is zoning, because, you know, rural residential means rural residential, not, you know, car salesman and all this stuff. And once you get one of those permits, some of these people seem to think that once you get a conditional use permit, I can do whatever I want. And that shows in some cases. Won't go into that, but that said, thank you guys very much for your service. Appreciate it, and thanks for doing what you do.
Could you repeat your name for me, please?
I'm Ron Rogalski.
Rogalski? I was trying to say that right. Is there any questions for Mr. Rogalski? Councilmember Glenn Denning.
Yeah, just a thought. Over time, we've heard comments from large groups of people representing different areas in the same geographical area, okay? Would it be possible to think about this, that like-minded people within an area, a subdivision or whatnot, could look at their zoning and say it's RR, and maybe just adjust it, say, to an RR1, which is a little more, a little more positive towards your viewpoint? That might be a very good starting point for your understanding, and it would help us so we don't have to do a delicate dance every time a permit comes up.
I know, and this has gone on for, you know, 35 years. I've dealt with this. There was a person, whose name I won't mention, way back when, who wanted to rezone everything down there, because dealing with all these things was too much of a problem for her. And so everybody said, no, we don't want to do that.
But it might be possible, while the iron's hot in your instance, and I've mentioned maybe to other people in the group, and it's something to contemplate. This is, whatever we do tonight is in the instance, but the issue, but the issue still has yet to mature.
That's true. And here's one of the challenges, is that as you wind through all of that neighborhood over there and all this stuff, is there are so many old permits and old things. There are people who are grandfathered, there are people who've had their businesses there for 40 years, and if you rezone, do you kick them out? No, that's not the right answer, right? And so, and then do you just rezone it so you don't care anymore? I don't think that's the answer either. I mean, the city has, you know, a comprehensive plan that has it lined out. And I'm not very, I admit, I'm not very knowledgeable on that plan, but it's there. And so all these things are kind of in a duck route, right?
Well, maybe you could work with us, and we could school each other up.
Nope, I get it.
Okay, I mean, there might be a group, a unique group that identifies your viewpoint and whatnot. That's a good starting point.
And one of the things that we've always, one of the things we've always pushed back about is, you know, because always when you talk about rezoning and you're changing the zoning, always the push that comes in from the side is open it up, less restrictive. We don't, we don't want to, we don't want to have guidelines and boundaries. But there's a reason that people bought all those properties in within that thing. If I wanted to live in, you know, the city industrial district, I'd have bought a lot next to Louis', right? I don't want to live there. I want rural residential. And so changing the zoning, I'm okay if you change it tighter, you know, no rabbits, but if you want, if you want, if you want to open it up and say, no, we can have more stuff that we've got going on now, I don't want that. That's the...
Well, you bring up a good point. Zoning is a two-edged sword, but I think from your point, there might be just a way to just massage it just a little bit and help your situation.
I will totally admit that I'm not totally cognizant on R1, R2, R3, or whatever. It might be the way to do it and tweak it a little bit. But I will acknowledge in having listened, you guys all listened to, you know, two weeks ago, there are people who have things going that they don't, they don't want to get squeezed down, they don't want to get shut down, they don't want to get, you know, changed up. Okay, I'll give them that, because there are things that, okay, you got grandfather, you got things, you got people who've done stuff forever and stuff. It's, as I said, I go back to my analogy, people who color outside the lines, no, stop. Your crayons are pulled. You have to stay inside the line. And the lines are the lines. If we keep the lines, if we keep the lines right, I think we'll all be okay. But when you start going willy-nilly, the rest is still late. Just yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And thank you for your sincere comments.
Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to speak to 3243-2021?
My name's Rusty Huff. I live at 765 Ames Road, Kenai. I'm here to support the changes in the ordinance, and I applaud Mr. Malloy for bringing this forward. It's way overdue. I've lived here for 53 years, and I've seen Kenai grow exponentially, as a lot of you have been here a long time as well. And I believe that we've kind of outgrown this conditional use permit process, as well as a lot of our zoning. as a lot of our zoning. A lot of the zoning that's rural residential has been exploding with homes and neighborhoods and people working and trying to carve out a life. And I think that these conditional use permits for commercial operations in residential neighborhoods are, they're difficult because, in my opinion, I don't think they belong, I don't think we belong, I don't think we, I don't think that a business like that belongs in a residential neighborhood, especially a high-density residential neighborhood. Some of these places that we've been speaking about it, you know, the cat's out of the bag, there's, well, like an Angler, there's like 23 permits over there already, but there's still people that live there year-round, and there's still residents there. And one of the, one of the new deals in this, in the new conditional use permit is when permits are transferred from one owner to another owner that they, if they want to expand the scope of their business and they want to get outside the conditions of the conditional use permit, they need to come in and reapply and go through the process again so people aren't bombarded with more and more and more people. I mean, some of these places have changed hands in the last few years, and, you know, they're leasing dock space, they've got, you know, tons, tons more people coming in and coming and going. But I think that this revision is way overdue. I think we could do something with our zoning, especially in places like Beaver Loop and places that are exploding with residential neighborhoods. I think they've outlived their rural residential designation, and I think there's things we could do to help everybody to keep us from having to do this. I think it's important that when people apply for a conditional use permit, that they're, it's their burden to prove that they're not going to be a burden on the rest of everyone else that already lives there. It shouldn't be up to us to have to come in here and fight for our survival for our neighborhoods that we've built. I mean, I've lived in the same area for 35 years, and so I get offended when I have to come down here and defend our neighborhood from people that want to start a business and just do whatever the heck they want to do. So I've got three seconds left. I'll leave it at that. If anybody has questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Huff? No, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance
Rick Baldwin, 380 Kimmon Ange Court, Kenai, joined by my wife, with my wife Bobby, mayor, council. Thank you for putting this on the agenda, and especially thanks to the mayor for moving it up on the agenda so that it's more convenient for those of us that are here. Thanks also to Mr. Malloy, the city attorney, and to the planning director for, who I understand were the ones that put this together. We support the changes that are proposed, but we would have one additional change that we would propose to, we think, improve the ordinance. We noticed that during recent hearings on a request for a conditional use permit to operate a lodge and a guide business, that the applicant made several statements about his proposed operation for the purpose of showing that his operations would be much more limited in scope than those of the ordinary guide or lodge operation. And these statements were made to induce the city to issue the conditional use permit. Examples were the limitation of the number of people in the lodge and the guests who would be limited to his fishing clients, the number of boats, quiet hours, the number of days of operation and dates of operation. None of these limitations were included in the application, nor were they included in the draft permit presented to the planning commission or in the resolution prepared by staff. It was just pretty much a generic application, resolution, and permit. But based on the questions, both the council and the commission seemed willing to accept these representations as being descriptive of the operations as they would be conducted in the future. But no one brought out the fact that these representations would be binding only if they were included as conditions of the permit. And had the permit been issued as proposed, the applicant would have been free to operate without the restrictions that he described, and there would have been no recourse by the city. Once a permit is issued, the holder of the permit is free to operate that permit without any conditions except those that are described in your ordinance. And for that reasons, I would suggest adding language to the ordinance in two places. Amend paragraph E6, add, "The permit shall reflect all special restrictions or conditions under which the applicant proposes to operate." And if I may, one more. In paragraph G, which is the staff report, provide that the staff report shall set forth all variations between the typical use for which application has been made and the use as proposed by the applicant, including specific limitations on the use as apparent from the application. I think that would put the kind of teeth into this so that you'd actually get what he's trying to sell. So thank you for allowing me to run over just a little bit.
Any questions for us, Councilmember Glenn Denning?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Yeah, you raised an interesting point. A lot of it, I think, is process, how we manage our business. And sometimes if there's a document before us and it states certain goals, objectives, premises, and then something else in the testimony appears, okay? And your approach is how do we meld that? I think a good process would be, and it's allowed in our code, that we just note the discrepancies, note the difference, either call an adjudicative recess with our commission or postpone it till next meeting so this can be resolved. I think, I think your point's well taken, and I think it can be addressed in a process manner, in a manner of process. Would you agree?
I would agree. I would agree, and to tag on to that, I would suggest that you have a detailed written process because it's my experience and understanding from kind of this opportunity that I had to get involved in this, is that there is really very little in terms of written process that would guide the planning commission or guide the clerk or the planning director in how you operate, how you operate the hearings, and then again, how you deal with these discrepancies that come up. But they do need to be dealt with, otherwise you've got a bait-and-switch operation and you're relying on person X to operate his business, which he might for 15 years. And then...
Just one more, one more point.
Councilmember Glenn.
Yeah, I think what we're looking at here is, in this ordinance, is mentioned, the meeting between the applicant and the, and the planning and zoning director, okay? At that meeting, I would suggest that the applicant lays out his case, and the planning and zone director would be, in one case, an expert witness, in others, just a master, as you would have in a court, and say, this is what our Title 14 is, because most applicants don't know. This is how it fits in with the land use table in the zoning area that you are in, okay? And here's how the process works, and here's the possibilities of your enterprise, okay? That should be in his report to the council, okay? And with it should be mandatory findings, okay? And his report should be honored, not with supremacy, but there should be findings, there should be a outline of what he views the city's position is in each applicant's scheme, if I could use that. And then that would give the applicant confidence to invest more money and come forward and perhaps make his presentation based on the facts that are presented by the planning and zoning director, who is our expert in this situation, okay? I think, I think that might, that might define our process well.
And I would, I would agree with that, but I think that needs to be codified. If it's not codified, then the next new guy doesn't know how to do it.
Exactly, exactly. And, and no matter what happens tonight, this is a work in progress. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
We do understand that RR1.
Any other questions on Mr. Baldwin? Councilmember Naxted.
Thanks, Rick. I appreciate your testimony, and I think, I think mostly what we're talking about are guide businesses and whatnot, and I think since I've been involved with planning and zoning in the council, it's probably been the highest complaints, I suppose, because we do have a lot of conditional use permits out there that happen quietly and properly, and many of them might be next door, somebody has a second shed. That's a conditional use permit. It, you know, it goes into all these different things, so it's really hard to create a code that really nails everything down in a certain way. If somebody's going to build a shed, you know, if they're expanding upon it, I guess they could, but then it's up to the neighbors to notify the city or something like that, that conditional use permit. And that's not why you're here, because of a shed, but could be, or it could be something very similar. We have a lot of different conditional uses that are not really typically too big of a deal, you know? So, but at any rate, you know, I do agree that planning and zoning needs to have findings and do any additions, and also all the folks that are notified in an area, you know, we hope that they'll come in and explain, you know, how their area is different and why maybe it doesn't apply here, or how it could be better. You know, it might be a conditional use permit that's appropriate to move forward. We're not going to get rid of conditional use permits.
No, I'm not suggesting that.
It was sort of suggested, but, you know, if you look at the whole list of them, it's just, it's just not, you know, something that we'd really want to do, but...
But we appreciate the hard work you're putting on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Mr. Baldwin, thank you very much for coming and speaking to us, as well as Mr. Richardson, Ms. Coots, Mr. Rogalski, Mr. Huff, and everybody else who's going to comment in a few minutes. And I appreciate the specific recommendation that you're making and the proposal language and everything. And when we get to the council discussion, I plan to talk about the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and the comments there, which are people, are similar to what people are making tonight about, about the broader view and a lot of other issues that are in the process, and people talked about, you know, revocation and enforcement and all those things. I look at this as, as like step one of a process, and, you know, I'm not sure where the council's going to go with this, you know, tonight, but, you know, the, so if, for example, your concept isn't worked in tonight, it would be something for the next stage, you know? And, and you have, you know, a chair twite from the commission who's here tonight, Commissioner Douthat, who's here also, is a candidate, as well as several of the people on the council, Mrs. Askin was on planning and zoning, Mr. Glenn Denning, Mrs. Petty, Mr. Naxted. So, so they can certainly carry the ball, and I see Ms. Sonar, who's also candidate, is here, you know, forward if everything can't be accomplished in this first step. But we, we certainly recognize that there's, there's a lot more that needs to be addressed, and want to just thank you for that, for your specific recommendation.
Well, thank you, and we look forward to seeing the final product or the first final product, if there's going to be a second one after that. So thank you very much for working on this.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance 3243-2021?
Hi there. Kelly Kelso, 408 Rogers Road. And I, first of all, thank you, I want to echo Mr. Baldwin. Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, for putting this up on the agenda. It is so nice for people, residents, to be able to just deal with their business when they need to and not spend all night like you guys have to at these meetings. I was just so excited to see this update to the conditional use permitting process because if you think about it, the main function of a residential neighborhood is to provide a quiet, peaceful space for living and sharing with our neighbors. But it's been my experience that the conditional use applications often seek to undertake business opportunities which run counter to just exactly that. And I, like Rusty, we went to school together, 53-year resident too, we've been up here lots of times, we've lived in this city forever, but many times coming here dealing with conditional use permits. And so I was so excited to see that these changes include the addition of item two in the review criteria, which considers the economic and non-economic impact on a neighborhood. That is just, I remember being so shocked when I've been to these meetings before, and, you know, all the residents came out, no, we don't want this, and then you look at the criteria of conditional use, and, well, it doesn't really matter, actually, if you don't really want it. They satisfy all these criteria in the conditional use permit. So thank you so much for including this in as one of the criteria, and I look forward to seeing the final plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kelso. Any questions to Ms. Kelso? No, thank you. Anybody else from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance 3243-2021?
Hello, good evening. My name is Frances Yurick, and this is Mark Yurick. Our address is 3065 Kimmon Ange Court, Kenai. We support Vice Mayor Malloy's ordinance amendments. We moved to Kenai in 2019 for the quality of life in the quiet and peaceful neighborhood. However, in our experience, the past few months, we've discovered that the conditional use permit process was unclear and confusing, and these amendments are a good start to a much, much needed improvement. These amendments will help make the process more transparent, more equitable, and will protect the quality of life in Kenai. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yurick. Any questions for Ms. Yurick? Thank you all. Thank you both. Anybody else from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance 3243-2021?
If you're on Zoom, you can use the, unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Seeing no further public testimony, we'll bring you back to co... Oh.
I thought you were, somebody was on Zoom.
Oh, no. Or so. Ms. Schmidt, you have the, you have the floor.
So full disclosure, the sponsor is my spouse of this ordinance, so I am prejudiced in favor of it, but I want to say that I have been coming to Planning and Zoning Commission and city council meetings for many years, and I think this is a much-needed improvement. I really appreciate the work that the attorney and the planning director and the council member have done to get, put this together. I think it's a really good first start. I went to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last week, and there, people had a lot of ideas for additions to it, but I'd like to see you pass this tonight and get it done so that we can move forward. I think, especially since conditional use permits come along, you know, once or twice a month, so I think it'd be really great to have these basic changes done tonight and then take a look at the whole process in more detail. There are some things that could be added or improved on, but I think this one, this is a really great start, and I urge you to pass it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Schmidt?
No questions.
Yeah, probably a smart move by Smear Malloy. Is there anybody else I'd like to speak to, ordinance 3243-2021? Thank you all for coming out and testifying. With that, we'll bring you back to council and open it with Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. First off, I want to thank everyone who came and testified tonight. Appreciate all your comments, especially about the bigger picture. I do want to mention that the city clerk did have, also have input into this, and particularly the part about, you know, making a, making a special page and putting the... and particularly the part about, um, you know, making a, making a, a special page and putting, uh, the, a link to the, uh, to the permits, the permit application and, and to when that would be on a hearing on a, on a page. And it's part of the public outreach, and that's really good. Uh, this was a collaboration with the planner who, uh, you know, wrote the section on the pre-application process and with the city attorney who wrote part of it, you know, all the legal stuff. And, and I had a few ideas that they didn't think were too bad. And, uh, anyway, um, uh, you know, uh, yes, uh, and then, and then, uh, uh, the, the council sent the matter to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission because they had a great public hearing. They worked two and a half hours on this. Uh, you know, they, they heard from the public, a, 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 a lot of public testimony. Um, I'll, I'll just mention some of it because it, it confirms, uh, a lot of what we were hearing tonight. There were some other comments, um, uh, you know, that, uh, like Mr. Baldwin was saying here tonight, talking about the gap between what an applicant, uh, represents to the commission and might not be captured in the conditions. Uh, in the, in the, in the, uh, Planning and Zoning did talk a lot about, uh, conditions and, and maybe being more specific on conditions. Uh, and again, I appreciate, uh, the, the, the language that you offered, uh, uh, tonight. I didn't get it all, uh, but, uh, but again, uh, if, uh, if, if, uh, this passes tonight, uh, it's, 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 it's not, I think, again, I think it's, it's a, a beginning, uh, you know, of, of, of a process. A lot of the, a lot of the, uh, discussion that the commission had, had to do with, uh, the revocation process and, and then with enforcement and how enforcement works and stuff like that, which, which is really, when you, when you put in an ordinance on the table, it has everything, um, like that. And of course, it opens it up to anything, and, and any of that could be amended. But that's kind of like a really big project. Uh, you know, it's almost like looking at the land use table, not as bad as looking at the land use table. Okay, I take that back. Uh, and, uh, you know, what changes there might be in zones and everything like that. But, but, uh, uh, the, you know, the, uh, how to, how to craft, uh, uh, the words to capture your, your comment. I thought you make a, made a good start. But, you know, again, this is, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission's procedure. Uh, so it was important to us that they have the opportunity, um, you know, to work on it. And it was great that, uh, we had a date where they had nothing else and, and they, they worked really hard on it. Um, another thing that, uh, was mentioned, which was mentioned tonight, was that some of the review criteria are vague and, and there should be more detail, uh, in the review criteria. And that, again, is a big project. You know, the one thing that, the one difference this is making is capturing value as both, uh, uh, economic and non-economic value. And I was really pleased that Commissioner Springer, um, totally supported that in the, in the Planning and Zoning, uh, meeting because, you know, he used to be our building official, and he's a realtor, and, 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 and he saw, uh, va- value in a lot, in, in including both comments in it. Um, and, and, you know, we, we, when we sit as a board of adjustment, we heard a lot of that, uh, you know, um, uh, that related to both economic and economic value. So I, I felt, uh, myself and the planner and the city attorney and city clerk felt that that was, you know, w- one change that was a- appropriate, that maybe we could get now. But, um, but, uh, but, but redoing the whole criteria is a, is a kind of like a really big project. You know, uh, uh, and another, another thing was, um, um, better standards for review of permits, you know, which is kind of similar to what I was talking about, um, that, uh, there needs to be oversight over, uh, the transfer, uh, management transfer of a business operation, you know? And that's kind of s- what, uh, people were talking to, about tonight. And, and, and I get that. Um, in this ordinance, there's really only a, a, there's really only a, um, a little oversight that maybe could, when, when the permit itself is transferred as opposed to management, you know? And again, that's, that's something that, uh, really needs to have more look at by, by, by everybody and would, 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 you know, that's, could take a while to, to, you know, nail that down, too. Procedures, uh, yeah, people talked about procedures and having a better for both the applicant and the, and the, um, and the, uh, um, public. So they would know what to expect when they go to a public hearing and a suggestion was made, uh, you know, maybe there would be some kind of policy or, or policy manual. And again, that's something that could be developed also. Uh, you know, uh, it, it wouldn't necessarily have to be in this ordinance itself. Um, another, uh, thing had, that had to do with procedures. Uh, they talked about, uh, if there was a whole, whole group of people, that they might be able to combine their time just like, uh, you can for a city council meeting, uh, you know? And, and again, that's a procedure thing that they could, that could be, that could be dealt with later. So, so this, this captures, this ordinance, uh, you know, captures a lot of, uh, some practice and, and a lot of, well, actually, a lot of practice and puts it into code. Uh, you know, there's, there's always been a discretion in the commission, um, to grant, modify, or deny permits. This, this, um, just puts that in code. It also allows, um, the, the commission, the, the, well, I'm getting ahead of myself. That's an amendment. Uh, because the, because the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, which isn't really on the table yet because we haven't moved, the Planning, uh, and Zoning Commission, uh, recommended two amendments to this, uh, uh, ordinance. And, and, and one would give them a dismissal power if, uh, uh, you know, the, if the applicant, uh, doesn't give them any notice that they're not going to show and doesn't show, uh, they could dismiss it and the applicant could refile. It's not a denial. So they don't have to wait nine months. They could refile. They have to pay another $250 fee. But, you know, you, you've had a lot of, of public notice and, 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 and people may have shown up. Uh, so, uh, so that was one thing that they wanted, and that's in, um, Mr. Bloom's, uh, you know, uh, proposed amendment. Um, there was also some comment at the Planning and Zoning Commission that, uh, about, you know, that maybe the, the, we've gone away from certified mailing and the sign should be bigger. And, uh, and, and, and there was a discussion of cost, and the suggestion was, well, you can make the applicant pay the cost of the certified mailing or whatever. Uh, and, you know, that's, that, that, that has to do with a whole different ordinance. That's the public hearing ordinance. And there was also test, uh, also comment about expanding that beyond 300 feet because the borough, for example, has notice of a half mile wide. And that's not part of this ordinance, but that's all stuff for further on down the road. So, uh, uh, there are some, um, uh, uh, recommendations that, uh, the, uh, city attorneys put in that come from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, and, um, and so we could talk about those, uh, at some point when they're moved after the council's discussed the main ordinance. So thank you for all the time you've allowed me to, um, discuss, uh, Mayor Gabriel.
Certainly. Any further discussion, uh, from the body? Councilmember next then.
Yeah, I want to say, uh, Mr. Malloy, I appreciate the, uh, um, the modification to the code that you're presenting. And I think that, you know, it provides, codifies a lot of things that, that I hope had happened, but it necessarily didn't. I think, you know, uh, the applicant coming in and sitting down and basically presenting the case with the, with the planner and, and how all five or six criteria have been met and how he, she, whatever, intends to meet those, I think is, is, is very good as opposed to just waiting for the application to come in and then going through, you know, whatever iterations they do. And, uh, um, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Glenn Denning?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Gabriel. Uh, I have some concerns about the ordinance as written. And, uh, my concerns are that we're talking about, uh, a grant or denial, modification, revocation of a conditional use permit is discretionary. I think, I think everything that we talk about in conditional use permits pertains to our Title 14. Pertains to our Title 14. And this is, uh, this is something that, that, uh, should be supported by findings within our Title 14. In other words, what I'm, what I'm saying is that a conditional use permit has the boxes that you check. Within these boxes, they have to, these conditions have to be supported by our Title 14. With that, there must be findings. So I would, I would suggest that, that our planning director's comments and presentation not be discretionary. Okay? This is, this is what his experience is. This is what his interpretation of the ordinance is. This is the interpretation of past practices, and these are his findings. The commission can agree or disagree. If they disagree, they too must come up with findings to, to countermand or, or, or try and, uh, reverse the findings that the planning director has made. This gives a, a, a push, a give and take for this reason, is that when an applicant shows up with his petition, he has sat down with the planning director. The planning director has given him his best interpretation of what his project is versus the Title 14. With that, he is going to make his recommendations, and it will be supported by findings. So I would say that he must present findings. He must present recommendations. It's not optional. It has to be there. With that, the planning commission learns the position of an experienced master. The representation is what has been past practices. And if they disagree, they can make findings also. They don't have to do it that evening. You can call a adjudicative recess. You can, you can postpone it till the next meeting and do your research. I'm, I'm saying that, that the planning director should have deference. Another thing is the economic, uh, value. Uh, how do we determine that? We need to flesh that out a little bit more. It's subjective right now. Or, uh, it, I, I, I think, I think it's something that can be worked through. I, I don't know, I don't know how we, I don't know how we, how we do that. And, uh, these are my, these are my, uh, my main, my main concerns. And, uh, I, unfortunately, I was on vacation. I missed the, the Planning and Zoning meeting. I'm, I'm the liaison. Uh, but talking with some of the, uh, commissioners, there are still questions, process questions on how, how they, how they view this and how they fit in to the, uh, to this, to this ordinance. And, uh, at some point, I would be making a motion to, uh, put tonight's testimony and what they saw in their, in their previous meetings and, and have another, another go at it from the, from the viewpoint of what we have learned from each other this evening and in pri- and private, in previous meetings, and make sure that we want to have a good process for the planning director to bring legislation or recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And thank you.
Councilmember Malloy?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Um, I, just off of hearing some testimonies, I was hoping to get some clarification. Um, I'm gonna assume that would be from Scott, possibly. Um, how do transfers work on the conditional use and the limits work on the conditional use? Um, what are the recourse? Who follows up on this? Is it going to be our planning director, our cops, our attorney? And then do we do grandfathered and conditional use permits?
Uh, Mr. Bloom, if I got, I also see our city planner, uh, Mr. Foster's in the back of the room. Um, you can chime in if you'd like, but let you go, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Winger, I guess I'll start with your last question first, and you might have to go through them again with me. But I believe if somebody had a conditional use permit and a zone was changed and that conditional use permit was no longer allowed in this zone, it would be considered a grandfathered use. Um, I don't think our code specifically addresses it, but it does address, uh, existing uses. And I think this would be considered an existing use. That would be allowed to remain, uh, although it might not be, it wouldn't be allowed to expand or grow based on the code dealing with existing uses. As to your other question as far as revocation, who deals with it? Um, generally, I, I believe we have eighty or ninety conditional use permits in the city. Um, we do get an annual report from each conditional use holder, but it's a pretty generic report and just verifies that they're in compliance with, uh, you know, their taxes and any debts owed to the city. And so we generally operate when, uh, there's a problem with a conditional use, we generally find out about it from the public or neighbors that generate complaints. And at, those should probably go first to our city planner. Um, you know, we certainly work as a team here at the city and put our heads together and work together on it. But those complaints would go first to the city, uh, planner. If the city planner determined that, um, the activities within the conditional use permit were being violated, then the city planner, uh, could, uh, begin a revocation hearing process where the CUP could be revoked by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think you had another question, too. Oh, the transfer? So the transfer requires approval by the city. Um, it doesn't have to happen, but it's, uh, it requires approval from the city. So they would apply for a transfer, and there would be a hearing on the transfer.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Uh, just to respond to a couple of, uh, Councilmember Glenn Denning's, um, comments. So the point of this ordinance, uh, is to clarify the roles and responsibilities of applicants, uh, the planning director and the planning commission. And, uh, and so, uh, the planning director is, is, uh, to be, um, like, you know, the professional that, uh, will, under the pre-application meeting, uh, assist the applicant with understanding the code and the comprehensive plan and, and, and how to address questions that are in the application and what information that, uh, he would, uh, he or she would need to provide in order to have an application that's complete and could, um, allow the commission a meaningful review. Uh, and, uh, and that's, that's really what it's about. It's not to, um, you know, be prejudge anything or anything like that because that's the job of the commission. It's, it's the commission's job, uh, to, uh, decide whether to grant or, or, or modify or, or deny the petition or, um, and, and, and to add commit, commission, uh, conditions. And, and that's, you know, clear under, under, uh, under case law that we've had about this. So, um, uh, the, the ordinance does, um, provide under D that the commission, this is on page one thirty-three, the commission must make specific findings in its decision addressing all six of the required criteria stated above. And any relevant evidence may be considered by the commission in its decision. So, so they need to, uh, um, consider and make findings on the, on the, um, on the six, uh, conditions. But those are their findings. And in, in the, um, in the staff report, section G, the new section, and section D was written by the planner. And also section B, the pre-application meeting was, uh, came pretty much from the planner. Um, and, and, and that they may make a recommendation in proposed findings on whether the requirements of the chapter have been met and whether any additional specific conditions are recommended. So that's in there. But there, it's not their job to sit as the planning commission. It's the planning commission's job to take that information and, and, and decide and hear all the public comment and, and weigh, you know, and balance everything and make a decision about the planning, about the conditional use permit and what can, if they're granting it, what conditions are going to be appropriate for that. Um, and, and, and so, you know, under, um, you know, Councilmember Glenn Denning's approach, uh, the, the planner would really be elevated above the planning commission, and that's not where they're supposed to be. You know, so, um, uh, and, and then, uh, uh, so, you know, as far as that's concerned, that's where this is coming from. And that's, that's the way, uh, you know, the, those what the, those are what the roles or responsibilities are. And, 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 uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of speaking for the planning director. It's not my job. I don't, I'm not the planning director. I don't do that. That's my, 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 um, my, my personal view as a council member of what the, part of what the planning director's job is. But, you know, certainly he can answer any questions, uh, through. But, you know, certainly he can answer any questions through, through the mayor if, if council has questions about the pre-application meeting intent or, or, you know, or the proposal on staff report. Cause again, there's always been a staff report, but there's nothing been in code been about it. And, 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 and it's, 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 it's another important piece of information that the Planning and Zoning Commission considers. But, you know, it's, it's not determinative. Again, it's, the decision is for the Planning and Zoning Commission to make. Thank you.
First of all, Councilmember Petty.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I wanted to thank everyone that came and made comments on this tonight. And I want to thank Vice Mayor Malloy for bringing this to our opportunity to look at and work through. I think it's a great start in making sure that our residential areas provide opportunity for favorable, peaceful space to live. But also, that it also gives guidance where there is opportunity to have conditional, conditional opportunities for the city to grow and be business friendly. And we want to make sure that we have things in the code so that we can coexist, so that we can have the best city that possibly can be available. I know that, I'm, I'm very thankful for the planning and zoning and how they have worked very diligently with this and the city planner as well. And I think it makes wonderful and great strides so that this pre-application meeting can be explained because oftentimes when people are looking towards utilizing a personal use, a conditional use permit, that they might not be familiar with the process and that some of the snags and difficulties can be worked out ahead of time so that a cohesiveness can be achieved for residential and special conditional use permits so that every one can live in harmony. And so I think that this ordinance here is a step forward in providing that so that we can have great clarity and and a process moving forward to avoid challenges and difficulties. Thank you.
Councilmember Winger.
Yes, thank you. I too appreciate Mr. Malloy for putting this forth and I appreciate everybody's testimony. I understand your frustration. I've been impacted by conditional use permits. I get it. Frustration is when you've always lived in a place and a conditional use permit comes in and you find out you have less rights than they do. And they say there's grandfather rights on something that literally just got built. However, from hearing comments, I think a lot of the concern doesn't really so much lie in the application that we're talking about, but as everybody has said, the teeth in the game, the recourse, the revoking. And so for me, this doesn't address, I think, a lot of our concerns, which is the recourse. We, we might sit there and put limits on quiet hour, but we don't actually have anything in our code on quiet hour. So to me, there's, this is a great start, but it's not actually, for me, addressing the issues that I think everybody has, which isn't falling in this application period as much as it's falling in the parameters on how we're handling these once they're issued. So with, with that being said, I do have a little concern with tying this back to the comprehensive plan as the criteria for review on this, simply because from when I've talked to people, they have no clue what the comprehensive plan. And then that's open for interpretation. So, and you'll see that in our appeals process. We all interpreted, we came to our own findings based off of our interpretation. So when you have something that's really open for interpretation, it's really hard to make that, for me, part of the application guidelines because everybody interprets things differently. This is a great start and I do appreciate the work on it. But for me, this doesn't address the issues. What's the recourse? Are we gonna be revoking? Should we be transferring to somebody just for a grandfathered reason due to zoning? Or maybe they've moved? I, I'm not convinced. I mean, there really has to be a recourse. I mean, do we allow three years for an issue to go unresolved and just simply keep reviewing it yearly and reissuing it? We've heard that testimony and that frustration. So for me, I, I do have concerns because for me, this just isn't hitting those concerns for me.
Councilmember Naxted.
I just, not gonna completely reiterate what Mr. Malloy said, but this is a, this is a first step and I think it's a very good first step. And, and perhaps those that think that it could be expanded upon, that would be a separate ordinance and I would be happy to, to review whatever somebody else might wanna come up with to fix perceived problems and, and how we might do that. I, I think that getting into those details will take a whole lot more time. And when you're dealing with, with people and conditions and all that, sometimes it is subjective, sometimes it's, it can't be well-defined in code. And it, it does take people and it takes the audience. It takes the property owners all coming together and deciding, you know, what, what it does mean and how, why, why it means what it means or how we, how we perceive that. So I think this is a good start and I think anything additional is kind of outside of the general scope of, of the intent of this ordinance right now. But certainly it's out there for, for somebody else to, to pick up and, and, and carry on.
Councilmember Glenn Danning.
Yes, I have a process question. It talks about here on page one thirty-three. That's the burden of proof. The applicant for a conditional use permit has the burden to show by evidence that the criteria are satisfied. Substantial evidence is relative that a reasonable mind might accept and support a conclusion. At, at what point in time is he required to give his, give his, his testimony? Is, is it, is it when the application period begins? And when he interviews with the planning and zoning director? Is that when he makes his pitch? And, and he has some indication if, if he is going to be accepted or rejected at that point? Or is, or is he to come before the, the commission, Planning and Zoning Commission with expert knowledge of our Title 14 and, and express how all of this fits into land use, findings, how it, how it works with, with zoning? The, the burden of proof, I, I think, I think can be, can be, can be embraced. But I, I think the burden of proof should happen at the interview process with, with the, with the planning director and then be present for questions if necessary.
So I'll, I'll defer to the sponsor, Vice Mayor Malloy. This is new language in code, so.
Sure. And I'll address it briefly and then I'll defer to the city attorney who actually wrote it. But so, so this is the, this is what, the burden of proof is for the applicant at the public hearing, you know, not before the public hearing. And, and it's, it's a, it's always been there, but we felt that it should be expressed. And this is taken from other codes. I think this is from the City of Homer, who has a lot of Supreme Court appeals. And so that language is taken from the City of Homer code, I believe. And it's common in, in Supreme Court decisions. And so because it's legal, I'll defer to Mr. Bloom.
Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Vice Mayor Malloy and Councilmember Glenn Danning. I'm not sure what's left to me, but I, I do think that the way this is written, it's certainly not, the burden of proof doesn't come up at the meeting with the planner. The meeting of the planner is exactly what you described. The planner goes through the code, maybe the comprehensive plan with the applicant, helps them make sure that their presentation to the commission will be as valuable as possible so that we don't get applications that don't address the criteria that the commission's gonna be making a decision on. I think, I think it would be problematic to have the burden of proof at the planning director because then you're giving him the authority where really all he's there to decide is that however the applicant has chosen to address these, the issues have been addressed one way or another. It's not, it's not, the planner's job is to make sure that the applicant is as prepared as possible for the hearing and the hearing is as valuable as possible for the commission and the public, but not necessarily to be their cheerleader or their naysayer through that process. He'll give his own independent opinion based on his review of the code and the criteria, separate from what the applicant would provide.
Councilmember Glenn Danning.
Yes, thank you, Attorney Bloom. That explanation helps me understand. Whenever I have approached the borough, city once, I've sat down with a, with a planner or planning director, okay? And they have gone over the code. And by their explanation, they have me to understand what the limitations are, what is permitted, what is not. And by so doing, that meeting helped me prepare to show the burden of proof. Would it be with a, I don't know, a plat map or, or, or a, or a use? The, the initial contact with staff helps me with the burden of proof. But if the planning director shall include recommendations of proposed findings, then that helps establish the threshold for burden of proof. Okay, in other words, he'll say, this is what the code is. This is what he's trying to do. This is where he fits within, within the criteria. The applicant can be present to speak specifically to his project and to what he wants to do. But, but to help an individual make his, make his pitch and, and have the burden of proof, he has to be prepared. And where else does he get prepared for? But either through your office or primarily through, through the planning and zoning director. And I, I think that is, that is my concern, that he just doesn't, he has to have some, some education, some schooling, some, some means of, of preparing himself for this process. Thank you.
Councilmember Naxted.
I, I agree with Mr. Glenn Danning. And I, and I think that's what, what this amendment generally does. It brings that person, that applicant in and to meet with the planner. The application, if you might recall, it, it has the six criteria in there that are, and I've seen them filled in very briefly and, and completely, perhaps not taking the whole burden of proof, if you will, as seriously as this, this code is and the city planner would, would also emphasize. So it, it's clear to me that the burden of proof would be in the application that is in the end received because that's what the planner, the planner's not gonna provide a staff report until he receives the application, which requires the burden of proof lines being filled in after the meeting. So I think that we're, we're gonna find is the burden of proof from various applicants will be more complete and wide explaining, so.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a good explanation, Councilor Naxted. And in my, in my dealings, I found that I was, even though I had some idea and I'm a fairly good student, I found that any contact I had with, with planning, planning and zoning staff, I was better prepared for my, for my, for my understanding. I just wouldn't want it to be that a fellow would, you know, would turn in his application then show up before the planning commission and, and not be prepared to understand where he fits within the Title 14. So thank you for your explanations.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Askin.
I, I agree with, with Councilmember Naxted. And I also want to see that we continue moving forward with this and clarifying the recourse and revocation portions and am willing to, to serve as, on a group or whatever needs to be done.
Thank you. I think I heard Mr. Naxted said he'd be willing to partner with somebody that they wanted to further expand this as a phase two, I guess I could say. I know there's several amendments. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Just one more comment on the merits and then I would move to those amendments. So also, you know, because the burden is at the hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission, it also involves the presentation and testimony of the applicant as, as well as, as, you know, other people's public comment. So, you know, the pre-application meeting is gonna be helpful. And, and they can have as many, you know, really as, as much as is needed with the planning director till the planning directors, you know, says that, you know, you gotta, you gotta review the application. We got everything we need for the, for the commission, you know. So, and I, I appreciate Councilmember Askins and Councilmember Glenn Danning and Petty and Winger and Naxted, you know, being, looking to the future and to other issues that may be addressed regarding this. That being said, I wanted to move unless you would like to do that. Okay.
Go right ahead.
All right, all right. So this is, this would be the recommendations because the Planning and Zoning Commission, under their September eight meeting, recommended that council enact this ordinance with two amendments. And so our city attorney captured them in his memo at page, beginning at page one forty of the packet. So the first one is to move to amend, I move to amend ordinance three two four three twenty twenty-one by amending the last whereas clause to read. Whereas on September eight, twenty twenty-one, the Planning and Zoning Commission met and recommended the city council enact this ordinance with amendments.
Thirty-one at a time.
Second requesting of his consent.
Very good. Is there any, any objection?
Not an objection, a question?
Yes.
I guess I have to form it as an objection. The, the applicant not present, does extenuating circumstance?
Yeah, Councilmember Glenn Danning, so we're gonna sort of divide the question here. There's two, there's two amendments, so he just moved the, the first one, which was just to fill in the data.
Dividing the question, okay, I understand.
Yep, so you announced consent was requested.
Okay.
You announced consent was requested on the first amendment, which would be to amend the last whereas, to put in the date of the Planning and Zoning Commission met and recommended. Seeing no objection, that amendment is approved. Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thank you. I move to amend the new section D of KMC fourteen twenty-one fifty to read as follows. D, public hearing. If the application is in order, a public hearing shall be scheduled in accordance with the requirements of KMC fourteen twenty-two eighty. An applicant or representative of the applicant must be present in person or by remote device for the application to be considered at the public hearing. If the applicant or representative is not present at the scheduled public hearing and has not provided reasonable timely notice of unavailability to the planning department or commission, the application will be dismissed by the commission without a public hearing and the applicant may reapply at any time after paying a new application fee.
Second.
Discussion on the amendment. Councilmember Glenn Danning.
Yeah, thank you. Do extenuating circumstances come into play? I recall this summer, there was an individual who was gonna testify on behalf of his, of his endeavor, his project. And, and he got caught in, in, in traffic and we didn't know where he was. We delayed the meeting and then it started. If he could explain at a later time that he was in traffic, couldn't explain why he did it, no means electronically, would, would we, would we require him to pay another two hundred and fifty dollars even though if he was, was not, not available to, to make his, make his declaration?
Well, the way the proposed amendment reads is that it would be that he does not provide reasonable timely notice of unavailability to the planning and zoning. So, you know, I, I guess, so, yeah, Vice Mayor.
If I could address that. So the commission would determine if that was a reasonable timely notice. I mean, they, they, they got contacted and said, I can't be unavailable for this, available for this reason. So in that situation, they could determine to postpone the hearing, you know, because they did get reasonably timely notice.
uh, because they did get reasonably timely notice. This would really be a tool in their toolbox, so to speak, if the person, or, you know, did not give any notice and did not appear, uh, you know, then, um, uh, they don't have to deny the application, they can dismiss it. If you deny an application under the code, it can't be brought forward for nine months, okay? So this is actually positive, you know, because it would just cost them $250 if they want to go forward again. Um, you know, whoops, you know, my bad, um, no excuses, um, okay, come back in, start the process again, pay $250, you know. And so certainly the commission could decide to postpone in those circumstances. Thanks.
Counselor Winger.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, um, I, um, would have a question, um, for the sponsor of this. Um, by the applicant or representative, um, what would be the definition of representative? If I'm your friend and I'm here and I see you're not here, could I step up and represent you? Can, uh, if they're not there to represent themselves, can a real estate agent that's worked with them step up and represent them? Um, does this have to be approved ahead of time, or can just anybody step up and say, I represent this person?
Vice Mayor Malloy.
I'll take a shot at this, and then I would defer to, um, the city attorney, because it's, it involves a legal question, too. So, uh, so this is, for the most part, tied into the application form itself. Like, for example, um, there was an application, um, uh, by an owner of property, and the representative, uh, that filed the application was Byler Contracting. Um, so, so, uh, you know, either the applicant or the representative can do the public hearing. A lot of times, the representative's a surveyor, you know. So, uh, so it could be, you know, the survey, it could be the applicant, him or herself, it could be the representative, uh, you know, the, the contractor or, or the surveyor, um, you know, that, uh, that makes that contact and asks for that consideration. As far as, uh, anybody else that's not part of the application itself, like, well, I guess their lawyer could, you know. All right, all right, lawyers can, you know, I mean, I'm always in support of lawyers, so, so, so they can, you know. I mean, if a lawyer calls, you know, okay, that's, that's, that's a representative. Um, Realtor, um, Bob Springer isn't here, um, okay, uh, you know, maybe, I guess I would. Uh, there isn't a definition of that, but I would defer to the city attorney on that point.
Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, uh, Councilmember Winger. I think that whoever the representative is, we'd be lenient, I don't think we would require it to be an attorney. It could be anybody of the applicant's choosing that, and I think we would collect that information through the application process, you know, who's, who's gonna be representing, uh, this process. And I think more of that would be flushed out during the meeting with the planning director, the pre-application meeting. But I don't think, I don't think there'd be limitations as to specific professions or people. It's whoever the applicant chooses that can, uh, he feels will give the best present, he or she feels would give the best presentation on their behalf.
Thank you, I just want to clarify, so they would have to have some sort of representation put down on that application process? We couldn't just, because we've seen this recently, that's why I'm, I'm asking, can a real estate agent that's not listed step up and speak on their behalf?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Gabriel, Councilmember Winger, I think we'd be lenient in that respect, as long as we had approval from the applicant that this person was, uh, representing them. In that particular case, I don't think there was any clarity between the applicant and that, uh, agent as to whether he was supposed to really be representing that applicant or not.
Thank you.
I do have a question for a process. Um, who would notify the applicant that they, uh, of this provision? So they're, they would be made aware when they're, when this goes on the agenda for planning and zoning, that they must appear. Is that something that would be, uh, that's done automatically?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, again, I, I would think that'd be a part of the, uh, pre-application meeting with the planning director. Um, it's also in our code, I believe we provide all the applicants the, the relevant code provisions, too, so.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Request unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection?
I'd like to take a vote.
Very good. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, clerk please call roll.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Denning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nagstedt?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Vice Mayor Malloy.
I have two more, so I'll make these also one at a time. This one would be on, uh, page 141 of the packet, which is page two of the city attorney's memo for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it's to stick the word dismiss, that's in red, in that paragraph. So, I would move to amend that paragraph to, and this is in, uh, new paragraph E, to read as follows. Oh, excuse me, the first sentence of that paragraph, move to amend it to read, "The commission may approve, approve of conditions, dismiss, or deny the application."
Second request unanimous consent.
Thank you, unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, the amendment is approved. Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thank you, the last, uh, amendment is, um, this came out of the revocation discussion, um, that the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission had, and so it would be to amend, this is on, uh, pages 141, 142 of the packet, page two and three of the city attorney's memo, uh, to amend the paragraph on revocation for non-compliance, compliance notices, as to the last sentence. So, uh, it, it starts at, uh, page 141, page two, last sentence at the bottom. If the administrative official, so move to amend this. If the administrative official determines the permit holder is in compliance with the conditions in the subsection or notifies the permit holder of a potential violation in writing, the administrative official shall send any notice of compliance or notice of violation to the commission and the permit holder in a time of the minute.
Second.
Discussion on the amendment.
If I could just, uh, explain it a little bit, um, so, uh, the commission wanted to know, about the violations, um, when a notice was sent. And they recognized that, uh, you know, they might have to sit later as the adjudicative body on if, if it got to a revocation point. And so that they, that if they got contacted, um, by people involved, they'd have to tell them that, uh, you know, they can't discuss it because, uh, it might disqualify them from being on the adjudicatory body when it came to them. Um, but they did want to know about it, so they wouldn't get blindsided. So that was really the rationale behind it. Thank you.
Any discussion on the amendment? Uh, Councilmember, uh, Glenn Denning.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel, just, uh, another process question. What is the threshold for a potential violation? Uh, is it, is it a citizen complaint, is it something that's documented, uh, say through, uh, through the police department of, of complaints that have been turned in? Does the planning and zoning, uh, department, do they keep logs of telephone calls that, that have, uh, certain complaints about a situation? How, how does, how, what is, what is the threshold for a violation, for notification of a potential violation?
I guess we'll start with Mr. Bloom on this one.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Councilmember Malloy. A violation would be a condition of the conditional use permit, which includes, at least the, the newer ones, certainly include a vi, that the conditions include that the permit holders shall not violate any federal, state, or local laws. But it would have to be a violation of the condition, not just a complaint. And also, uh, our, we would do an investigation prior to, uh, certainly starting a revocation process or a notice of violation letter. But if we got a complaint from a neighbor, we would certainly look into that. Uh, but it may not rise to the level of a notice of violation unless, you know, we were able to verify it or that it was actually a violation of the permit itself. Um, as far as the record keeping in the planning department, I don't know if they log every call or that. Um, I know our police certainly keep a record of that, um, and we certainly retain any record, any written records per our, uh, records retention policy.
Thank you, Attorney Bloom. In the past, uh, there's been this, this discussion about, you know, what is the threshold within the planning zoning department for, for, uh, registering a complaint or logging a complaint, which, which may indicate a, an, an action. And, uh, I think that's perhaps a standard that could be applied or, or developed internally by the planning and zoning director. So, uh, my question is answered, thank you.
Counselor Winger.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd like to, um, go a little more on the potential violations. So if a conditional use has no limits on a noise hour, um, and we get noise complaints, but we don't have that in our code, how, how are we working with this? Um, can't, it's, it's kind of hard to label it a violation if it's not, um, within their conditional use permits and we don't have a code ultimately backing up in a quiet hour starting at 10. How do we, um, deal with those potential violations?
Um, I'll go ahead and have you, Mr. Bloom, answer this, but it, this, we're sort of getting outside of what the, what the proposed amendment is, which was just basically to simply notify the commission at the same time that the, the, um, permit holder, uh, is, is notified. But go ahead, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Gabriel, Councilmember, so first of all, we do have, uh, uh, nuisance law in the city that includes, uh, noise violation. I'll, I'll tell you, it's not as modern as many codes and, um, could probably be updated to be more specific, specifically in residential and industrial areas in the city. If, could you restate your question, then?
If their conditional use permit has no limits listed and we don't have a noise, um, code, how, how do we potentially, um, make that a violation?
So you're speaking specifically to noise?
Noise and not having that, um, I guess clarified within their permit.
Well, if it's not clarified within the permit, then they would be treated as any other private or business owner in the city with regard to, uh, complying with the city's nuisance laws regarding noise violations. You know, it's certainly been contemplated and, as it's become more of an issue, I think, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission has imposed, um, certain hour limitations on noise and lighting and times of business operations on newer conditional use permits. But the older ones that may not have a specific findings, it is problematic.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment, proposed amendment?
Request unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, the amendment is approved. Any further discussion? Counselor next.
Yeah, just, just a discussion item, I just wanted to thank Carol Fries, and there's an email from her in our packet, uh, our laydown tonight. Uh, she has a couple of suggestions, um, and the first of which I was, I was considering, uh, moving, but I, I think that it's, it's probably, um, implied or covered anyway. It doesn't need to go to that, that great a detail, but I, um, I wanted to first thank her for, for going through this code and then providing this, and then, um, also, uh, in case there was someone, counsel, that, uh, thought that it had merit, they, they could, they could move it, but I don't choose to right now.
Thank you. Any further discussion on ordinance 3243 as amended? Counselor Glenn Denning.
Yeah, just a, a question, uh, for the, for the, for the city manager. Uh, in the pre-application meeting, uh, it talks about the applicant may request a review with the city manager whose determination shall be final. Is, is that determination typically written and recorded as part of the folder, part of the packet?
Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Councilmember Glenn Denning. Um, so i- if they request a review at the city manager, uh, because they've gone through the planning director and it comes to me, I would provide that in writing.
Any further discussion on ordinance number 3243, Nash 2021 as amended? Counselor Glenn Denning.
Oh, I have an amendment, if now's the time.
Yes, now's the time.
Okay. Thank you. My, uh, my amendment is, uh, on page 132, and it's, uh, 142150A, and it's the last sentence. Uh, "The grant, denial, modification, or revocation of a conditional use permit", delete the words "is discretionary", add the words "must be supported by findings".
I'm sorry, can you tell me where that was again?
Yes, page 132. Uh, it's 142150A intent. Uh, on my, on my, on my page, it's, it's the first paragraph. And it's the last sentence that begins, "The grant, denial, modification, or revocation of a conditional use permit", delete the words "is discretionary", add the words "must be supported by findings".
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Glenn Denning.
Yeah, I would say that, that anything we do with, with a conditional use permit should be, should be founded in findings. Uh, there, there is, there's, there's plenty of, of verbiage in land use tables and in Title 14 for, for a, uh, for a, a determination of fact, findings. That would, uh, that would, uh, uh, grant, deny, modify, or revoke, uh, revoke a conditional use permit. Uh, it, discretionary is, is a loose term, I would tighten it up by saying, uh, "supported by findings", thank you.
Vice Mayor Malloy.
Yeah, um, I, I would oppose that, uh, amendment again, uh, if, uh, that's, the requirement for findings is already in, uh, the proposed ordinance on, on the next page. Uh, and it says, uh, that the commission must make specific findings in its decision addressing all six of the required criteria stated above. So it is there already. It's, it's always been discretionary with the commission to grant or deny, or modify a permit, uh, on public hearing, um, when they've considered all the, all the, all the criteria. Uh, and, and then they make findings based on what, what they exercise their discretion to make findings. Uh, and this requires them to make findings on, on the six specific criteria. So this is, this is, uh, not a change from, um, what the, what the practice has been, but it's codifying in code that they will make, um, you know, again, they will make findings on those six specific review criteria when they're exercising their discretion and making the decision on what they're gonna do about the application at the public hearing.
Any further discussion on the amendment, proposed amendment? Seeing none, clerk please call roll.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Denning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
No.
Councilmember Petty?
No.
Councilmember Askin?
No.
Councilmember Nagstedt?
No.
Mayor Gabriel?
No.
Motion fails.
Any further, Councilmember Glenn Denning?
Uh, I have another amendment.
Go ahead.
Okay, it's on page 133 of the packet, and it's, uh, we're down here on F, G, G, the staff report. And it talks about the planning director will provide a staff report on the application to the commission at the public hearing. The staff report may contain information deemed pertinent by the planning director. And my amendment is, when we come to, after the word "and", delete the word "may" and say "shall", include a recommendation and proposed findings on whether the requirements of this chapter have been met and whether it, any additional specific conditions are recommended. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. Vice Mayor Malloy.
You know, I don't support that amendment either. Uh, I think it's, it's up to the, uh, planning director, uh, you know, in his, his or her professional judgment, to, um, put together the staff report and what its contents are and making recommendations, uh, you know, uh, to the planning commission and, and, and everything. So, uh, you know, again, this was, uh, written by the planning director, uh, and, uh, so I don't really want to... I don't really want to, you know, change what the planning director thought was, you know, important for his staff report in the code. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Glen Dinning?
Yes, I think it's important that a recommendation and proposed findings on the requirements of this chapter be included in any presentation by the staff, by the planning director, by the administration. Thank you.
Councilmember Raskin?
Can we ask the planning director to speak to the language of the amendment?
Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel and fellow council members. Can you repeat the question?
So Mr. Glen Dinning, Councilmember Glen Dinning has an amendment on the floor that would under staff report, and I'll just let him restate the proposed amendment, and then I think there was a, the idea was to have you give your thought on how that would affect or materially affect, I guess, your report to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Councilmember Glen Dinning?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Under...
Your mic's out on me.
Under paragraph G in the staff report, we come to the second sentence, "And the staff report may contain any information deemed pertinent by the planning director designee." And my amendment is delete the word "may" and "shall," include a recommendation and proposed findings on whether the recommendation of this chapter have been met. My amendment changes the word "may" to "shall." In other words, we want to hear from you what your findings are, what you think. Okay, it's not a superior ruling, but it's a strong indication of pack practices, policies, your understanding of code and how it fits in with the land use tables, the zoning, and what you think is proper for the situation. Thank you.
Mr. Foster?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Glen Dinning, I think that difference between "may" and "shall," I would say the practices that I do provide that recommendation and those findings. I would say, not only in my time with the city of Kenee, but also with other municipalities. I actually can't think of a time where I haven't provided a recommendation on a conditional use permit or findings. I would say just the difference between "may" and "shall" is "shall" is kind of, just ensures that if for some reason there was a particular case where maybe a recommendation was hard to come by, or the recommendation was maybe neutral in nature, you know, perhaps by including the "shall" just kind of makes that a requirement to make a stand on a case one way or the other. So I really think, I don't have a lot of heartburn with either the "may" or the "shall," really. I would just say the difference between the two is one gives me, as a planning director, just a little bit more flexibility with making a recommendation and kind of what that strength of the recommendation might be. But again, the practice is that I've always included recommendations as well as those findings, so I don't really have a lot of heartburn with the "shall" or the "may," really.
And just how these things work out, I presume that when there is a conditional use permit application before planning and zoning, that you attend those meetings to answer questions that may arise as to, you know, where you stand or, you know, how this, you know, that meets the code requirements and things like that. Is that correct?
Mayor Gabriel, that is correct. Yes, yes. I attend. I give that staff presentation. I will say, even at times where I might have concerns, I'd bring up those concerns either in the staff report and presentation or potentially even with a drafted recommendation and I should say a drafted condition for either an approval or denial. So yes, I attend and I'd be available for both presentation and questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Glen Dinning?
Yeah, all I'm asking is that some effort be made here. In my experience at this Planning and Zoning Commission, at the Borough Planning Commission, a planning director has said, "Here, here's one side, here's the other. You're the commission, you split the baby. But we would appreciate hearing from you, and if it's a close call, please state so in your declaration." That way we learn. That way we know what the city, what the administration is thinking regarding, in the instance, in the instant, what the situation is. I know perhaps you always do, and we hope you would do, but if we have "shall," then we will hear something from you. Thank you.
Councilmember Naxte?
Thank you. The word "may" does give some flexibility, and it's still in the sentence. The first part of the sentence, it's there, that says, "The staff report may contain any information deemed pertinent." So I guess we could change that to say that you shall do it if we were going to make that. There's probably a bunch of other places in there, and I'm not sure that you wouldn't, but if I understand what you said, in some particular case, you may not. So perhaps the word "shall" gives you more flexibility, if that's what I'm understanding, or the planning. Or not "shall," but...
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, clarification.
Well, everybody got that, didn't they?
Yeah. Mr. Foster?
Through the mayor, Councilmember Naxte. Yes, I would say the "may" gives just a little bit more flexibility than the "shall." But like I said, I think in being liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I have an understanding that my relationship with them is to provide them as much as my subject matter expertise as possible with both my findings and recommendation. I would say that's my approach is to provide that kind of support. And I'll say, I've seen other cases in front of Planning and Zoning Commissions where the case manager might not be quite as maybe equivocal in providing sometimes that information. I think that's kind of what we're getting at with that idea between, you know, "may" and "shall." So I think the "may" gives just a little bit more flexibility, and "shall," you know, really doesn't give me any choice other than to provide some type of recommendation along with those findings.
Councilmember Glen Dinning?
Just one more try. You could give recommendations. Okay, I just, all I'm saying is, we just want to make sure that we hear from you. You just don't punt, or your success or any situation. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the proposed amendment? Vice Mayor Malloy?
Just another comment, really, for Mr. Foster. And your staff report isn't just, you know, writing. You give it verbally at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and the planning and commissioners can ask you questions during your report, and you have a dialogue with them, is what I've seen. And it's that kind of what happens.
Through the mayor, Vice Mayor Malloy, that's correct, yes. And I'd say that that presentation, it's largely based on, you know, the findings from the staff report, typically hitting kind of the key points that I'd like to bring out from the staff report. I will say, it's not exhaustive in the sense that I just, you know, I don't just read, you know, the staff report itself. It's really just focusing on the key points, the review criteria, really the pertinent information in a PowerPoint presentation format.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Glen Dinning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
No.
Councilmember Petty?
No.
Councilmember Askin?
No.
Councilmember Naxte?
No.
Mayor Gabriel?
No.
Councilmember Winger? Yes. Motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Thank you. Any further discussion on ordinance 3243, 2021 as amended? Seeing no other further discussion, I think we're getting ready to vote on this. I just wanted, oh, Councilmember Glen Dinning?
Yeah, could I just have a quick, at ease, have a campfire with the city attorney, please?
Yeah, let's take a 10-minute at ease.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to call our meeting back to order here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Thank you for the timeout, the campfire. And I will be voting in favor of this amended ordinance with the idea that this is just the beginning of the discussion and that the concerns that have been brought up by councilors who voted for or against whatever amendment was, that these concerns will be fleshed out and addressed. And hopefully that in the future, planning and zoning meetings, perhaps some of these discussions could be digested, or dissected, rather, and digested. And the discussions be explained as a means of education. I think we're all learning as we go here. And I just hope that the Planning and Zoning Commission, as I think they will, will go ahead with debriefing us and each other. Thank you.
Councilmember Winger.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I do appreciate the at ease and being able to talk with their attorney. You know, I don't think this addresses our concerns. We're really talking about the teeth in the game, the repercussions, the limitations. And, you know, this is just on the application process, not any of the concerns that we've heard in countless meetings or concerns I have that I feel that need to be addressed and identified out. This just didn't touch on any of those. After talking with our attorney, I will be in support of this with the understanding that we will be working on those other items as well because I think that's my concern. I think that's people's concern as well. So we will continue to work on this. I feel that our bodies should work on this sooner than later because this is just a piece. And I would have rather seen kind of a more completed piece brought to us that would have dealt with your guys' concerns and burden as well as my concerns. Again, I've been impacted by a conditional use. I understand. I understand feeling like your voice isn't heard ultimately. That's what got me to run for office. So I encourage any of you to run for office. We have people who stepped up and are running. So again, I think this is just the starting point. It doesn't really touch all the issues that I think we have uncovered in our discussions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on ordinance 3243-2021 as amended? I guess I'll jump in here, maybe wrap things up, hopefully. And I agree with that. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out here and testify, those who showed up, and then also for those who have testified. Obviously, you know, these are the things that I see. My experience on council, you know, conditional use permits, not all of them, but some of them can be very problematic for, you know, neighbors and cause some anxiety. There's, within the city of Kenai, we have our city of Kenai community. And then we have all these little other communities within the city of Kenai. You know, every neighborhood, I would think, almost considers themselves sort of this little separate community. And they may not, they sort of want to live a certain way generally and within that neighborhood. And it may differ from, you know, Rogers Road may differ from Inlet Wood and VIP where I live and other areas. But I do remember when I first got on council, we were, shortly after I got on council, we were going through the comprehensive plan. And one of the things they discussed with the previous city manager at that time was, you know, the situation on Angler Drive where we had all these conditional use permits that were issued. And there's a balance. Everything has, there's a balance. And you want to see growth and you want to see economic opportunity within your city. But at the same time, you ask yourself, do the people that live there, so now we've got these people that have moved in, got conditional use permits, and then more conditional use permits and then more conditional use. So when you've got an RR zone that's almost by default turning into a recreational zone, do you change the zoning of that just because of the default? I mean, it causes these questions. And I can see where folks that live within that subdivision or community can feel a little bit, you know, kind of left behind, so to speak. Maybe not what you signed up for. We had other, you know, it's one of the recent board adjustment hearings we had where we, there was, how do you reconcile covenants of the subdivision with the conditional use permits? Because they're not tied together. So there's some reconciliation, I think, that needs to happen that would provide some clarity and probably less, maybe a little more direction even to our planning and zoning. So these close calls, you know, the neighborhood involvement with the process, you know, needs to be a criteria that should be considered and, you know, just, and it is in some degree, but maybe that should be expanded. Because to Ms. Kelso's point, if you do all this notification for the neighborhood and they all show up, well, the applicant checked all the boxes, so it should, you know, fly through. And he may win on appeal. You know, provides maybe not, you know, as much peace of mind, I guess, to the neighborhood that, you know, they're showing up to testify. And it's almost universally opposed in the neighborhood. But, you know, it met the criteria of the permit application. So I do agree to a lot of the comments that were made up here that, you know, there maybe needs to do a little bit more work on our conditional use process as far as, you know, specifically criteria and determinations and things like that. And to Councilmember Anaxet's points, there, you know, there are some, clearly there are some conditional use permits that are far more contentious than others. So, you know, maybe that needs to be weighed out and balanced. So I guess with that, I'll close my comments. But I do support this ordinance. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call her on.
Vice Mayor Malloy.
Yes.
Councilmember Petty.
Yes.
Councilmember Askin.
Yes.
Councilmember Naxdat.
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel.
Yes.
Councilmember Winger.
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And I did leave one comment. I just want to thank Vice Mayor Malloy for bringing this forward and providing a first step. And that's why I'm going to miss you if you're not running.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. And I want to again thank the city attorney, city planner, and city clerk for all their work on this too. And as well as all of you on council. Thank you.
Okay, Council, that brings us back to item D2, ordinance number 3224-2021. Repealing and reenacting Kenai Municipal Code. Can we carry our conversations on? Well, item D2, ordinance number 3224-2021, repealing and reenacting Kenai Municipal Code Title VI elections to provide clarity, housekeeping, and process improvements. Well, there's a clerk's note that at the August 4th council meeting, this item was postponed to the September 15th council meeting. For a second public hearing, a motion to enact is on the floor. And also note that there is a suggested substitute ordinance number 3224-2021. So it is on the floor right now. I would like to reopen a public hearing. If there's anybody in the general public that would like to speak to ordinance 3224-2021, please come forward. Ms. Worth.
Hi, I'm April Worth, Kenai, 525 Wortham. I don't have a lot of questions. I do have some questions, but mostly I heard about this. And I don't think it's a bad deal. And I don't think that rewriting the Kenai Municipal Code is bad, and updating it is certainly not. And I don't expect there's a whole bunch of any nefarious, anything nefarious in here. But it is a pretty big code. And unfortunately, I couldn't remember if I was out of state or in quarantine when we had the public work session for this. Maybe under quarantine. And I was very interested in going over this in a public setting. And my concern is that rewriting a code, especially with the temperature of the community concerning elections, it kind of, it was bad optics. Not because it was nefarious, just that right before an election, it was bad optics, even though I know this is not going to be implemented until January 2022. And I had the opportunity to read through quite a bit of it. And before this came up tonight, this was the first time I've actually read through it. And most of it I recognized. And I saw where the changes were, and I appreciated that. I do have some questions. And I would really ask that this get tabled because I would love to see another community work session on this so that I can understand it better. And other people that I have talked to, they have the opportunity to come in and also go over this, go through a work session so that we can better understand what exactly all of these changes are. I do have, I had a question, which I already asked the city attorney about, and Mayor Brian Gabriel, which was answered. It's something that popped up. And the other one, and I know that you can answer this question or I can ask my city council member later on. But I'm just asking you to table it right now so that we can have a little bit more time to go over this and understand it better before it gets voted on. And maybe submit some things that maybe we do or don't approve of.
If you have any questions, or Ms. Worth, comments? Thank you. Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance number 3224-2021?
Hi, my name is Kathy Medkoff. And what I really like to say is that I do agree with April and everything that she just said. I'd like to have the opportunity to just go over the packet. It's over 100 pages, front and back. And there's a lot to take a look at. I really appreciate if you give us that chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else I'd like to testify to ordinance number 3224-2021? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council.
If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature or unmute yourself.
Thank you. Bring it back to council. Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Before we get to the discussion of the merits and what council may want to do with the ordinance prospectively, I just want to note that the ordinance was introduced at our July 7th meeting. We had a public hearing on August 4th. We had a work session on September 1 where council worked on it for three and a half hours. This was before the meeting. And then after the meeting that day, there was a really good presentation by the city clerk at that time, which might be recorded, possibly the work session is recorded. So that would be another, you know, tool. And so today's the second public hearing. And Ms. Worth is correct. This ordinance would not take effect until January for next year. And, you know, what it does is, it doesn't do anything nefarious, like you were saying. And it's, to use your own words, it's not bad. You know, it reorganizes the code, takes stuff from different sections and puts it logically in the same sections, spells out practices that the clerk has had and to put them into code. There's some new code to better align the city with the borough and the state. Because we're not going to be using state equipment anymore. We're going to be using, you know, the borough, the cities are going to be working more closely with the borough, using borough equipment. So what I'd like to do is move the amendments that came out of the, some of the amendments that came out of the discussion at the council work session, which are in the memorandum from the city clerk, being on page 104 of the packet. And then, you know, those amendments could be dealt with. And then the council could then have a discussion about, you know, going forward. The, a final action on this ordinance would need to happen by the second meeting in October. Otherwise, it falls off the agenda completely. And, you know, then there would have to be a start do-over. So.
Vice Mayor Malloy, just for clarification, I think those were included in the substitute.
Right.
That we talked about. So if we move the substitute, I think.
Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize. I moved the substitute, and then there's some amendments to that.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, that's in the substitute. It's been a long evening. So thank you. Thank you for, thank you for the direction. That's why you're mayor. All right. So I would move the substitute ordinance number 3224-2021.
Second that.
Any discussion on the motion?
Request unanimous consent.
unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the substitute is now, is the ordinance we're considering, which is, Vice Mayor Malloy said incorporated some minor amendments that were suggested that came out of our work session. Vice Mayor Malloy.
Yeah, so those are just the definition of bonded indebtedness that council member Glenn Dunning suggested. The, including an age requirement that was previously in code in the qualifications for candidate. That was suggested by Mayor Gabriel. Deleting sentences so that, you know, voters would be allowed to sign as many nominating petitions for as many people as they want. That was suggested by council member Glenn Dunning. Scrivener error that the clerk noted. And then renumbering of some paragraphs noted by the clerk. And so then on the second page of her memo, page 105, there are additional amendments that the clerk discussed with the borough clerk. And there's an explanation. that the clerk discussed with the borough clerk, and there's an explanation why those weren't included in the substitute, the city clerk being a cosponsor of the ordinance. So that's where we're at currently. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Malloy, could I get you to offer an amendment to the, the one that was on our first laydown tonight, which was another scrivenor error?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So this is in the laydown, on page two of the laydown, and this would be to amend page thirty-seven of substitute ordinance number three, two, two, four, twenty twenty-one by replacing the word parking with marking in the third line of six, thirty-five, oh, thirty, A one.
Second request unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, that amendment is approved. Vice Mayor Malloy, or did you have anything else? Okay, good. Any further discussion on ordinance number, substitute ordinance number three, two, two, four, dash, twenty twenty-one is amended?
Now the time for more amendments?
Our discussion, yes. Is there any other amendments that would?
I have, I have a question, and I have an amendment, and then the question will be fleshed out. My amendment pertains to six point three zero point zero five zero absentee voting by mail. Yes, yeah, and it's page ninety-one, and actually, it's page ninety-two is where I'm, where I'm gonna lodge my, my thoughts. On page ninety-two, that's paragraph C, okay? And the, the, my interest in offering this amendment is that it would harmonize the, the conditions under witnesses avail themselves of their services. It would harmonize absentee voting by electronic transmission and absentee voting by mail. In other words, they both, in my estimation, should be, should be the same. So here's my amendment. Under paragraph C, if we come to the last sentence, if none of the officials listed in this subsection are reasonably accessible, an absentee voter shall have the ballot witnessed by, strike the word a person, add the words one United States citizen. My reason for doing this is if we go to page ninety-three, absentee voting by electronic transmission, it contains the same requirement, that a statement under oath must be witnessed by one United States citizen who is eighteen of age or older. Thank you.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
Very good discussion on the amendment, proposed amendment? Vice Mayor Malloy.
So I'd ask the clerk to address that after a couple comments. Perhaps we need to, you know, and I would defer to clerk on this, delete the other qualification. The, the problem with, with requiring, so, so requiring United States citizenship for a witness isn't, isn't like required for a lot of other, other, other things, and, and, you know, and, and I think there could be an enforcement issue with the proof of that, you know, I mean, requiring the clerk to, you know, check into whether, whether a witness has that, which is different than the voter qualifications, but I'd ask Ms. Heinz to speak to that.
Ms. Heinz.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, Vice Mayor Malloy. That is my concern, is that a witness is providing a signature, and I'm unable to determine if that, if that signature is, I can barely even read the signature, so I probably don't even know their name to determine if they're a U.S. citizen or not. So that's my concern with, we could ask them to provide a signature, and so if there's a signature there, am I to assume that it's a U.S. citizen? Or, or in the event of a challenge that goes to court, if a judge asks for the backup to prove that those witnesses are U.S. citizens, and I don't have them, is he then going to throw those, those ballots out of the election? Those are, those are my concerns.
Oh, thank you. I would, excuse me, I would suggest that by the, by the, the statement executed under oath as to the voter's identity, the statement may be witnessed by one United States citizen who is eighteen years of older. I would say by, by affixing the signature is affirmation of the qualification. That would be, that would be, that would be the affirmation. In other words, I am, I am a citizen who is eighteen years of older, I am signing this as an affirmation of this, of this, understanding this rule.
Mr. Bloom, I see his, his light on.
Thank you. Mayor Gabriel, council member Glenn Denning, would you be willing to include language that the clerk is able to accept that as affirmation, that she's to clarify that she's not supposed to do an independent check? Because that's our concern, is that we don't want a judge to overturn a vote because of that.
Thank you, Attorney Bloom. Maybe if I could have assistance with the verbiage, and we'd smooth it out, and that would be very, very acceptable.
Take a brief ed-eez? Or do we have it? So you asked for verbiage, and you received verbiage. That was very quick, thank you, Ms. Heinz. Councilmember Glenn Denning?
Oh, thank you. So reading from my script, we're going back here to six point three zero point oh five oh. On page ninety-two, we're on paragraph C, and I will read. Amend what is currently the last sentence in six point three zero point oh five oh C by striking the words a person and replacing them with one United States citizen, and add the following last sentence, following sentence as the last sentence, a self-certification of the witness's qualifications may be accepted.
Is there a concurrence of the second?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any discussion on that amendment? We'll do the next one separate.
I didn't hear.
We can do the next one separate since we're already kind of there.
Okay, you know, that's, they're companions.
Yeah, okay, go ahead and move that.
All right, and then I would move to amend section six point three zero point oh six oh, page ninety-three of our, of our packet, by adding a sentence, a second sentence which states, this would be the final sentence of this, of this paragraph, the sentence would state, a self-certification of the witness's qualifications may be accepted.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any discussion on that amendment?
Can I have a minute to talk to the attorney?
Sure, yeah, take a brief ed-eez.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any discussion, any further discussion on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxdat?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Denning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Thank you, Councilmember Winger.
I have a motion for an amendment as well.
Go ahead.
Okay. I would like to retain the section six dot two five dot zero one five Voting Devices and Machines from our original code. And if you're ready, I'll read it. Section A, so voting devices and machines will be used for all regular and special elections unless determined not to be practical by the clerk. The laws of the state concerning voting devices and machines are incorporated in this chapter as if fully set out in this chapter, except for provisions in conflict with this chapter. B, the election official shall designate the computers to be used in counting the ballots and may negotiate in contract with Kenai Peninsula Borough or a private computer service for the needed computer services. We would add a C, computers and voting machines may not be plugged into phone, internet, Bluetooth, or fiber optic cables during operating hours.
Sir, second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, Councilmember Winger?
Yes, thank you. I understand that there was some concern addressed from the borough clerk, and in that concern, they referenced the Kenai Peninsula Election Code, Resolution two, dash, twenty-one, dash, zero, three, two, that the borough will conduct a pre-election security risk and vulnerability assessment. In that Kenai Peninsula Borough Code, it doesn't actually address this specific issue. We, it addresses that we will be tuning testing before and after elections, but what it doesn't address is the security of not plugging the machines into phone, internet, Bluetooth, or fiber optic cables during operating hours. So that part is not in the borough code, and that is my concern in addressing that and retaining this code.
Any further discussion on the proposed amendment?
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Mike, I have a concern with the term operating hours, because we are still operating in elections beyond eight P.M., and at eight P.M. is when they close the doors to voters, and that is when we are connected to phone to order, in order to transmit the results to the borough. So if that could be.
Would that be better, be amended to be?
Amended to something else that is?
Hours that the polls are open?
Yeah.
While polling is open?
Yeah.
Something along those lines?
Okay, I'd like to amend it to say, computers and voting machines may not be plugged into phone, internet, Bluetooth, or fiber optic cables during polling opening hours.
Is there a concurrence of the second?
Yes.
Very good. Any discussion on the proposed amendment?
Request unanimous consent.
unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, the amendment is approved. Councilmember Winger?
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Go ahead.
I would like to retain section six dot two zero dot zero seven zero polling locations. The city of Kenai shall be composed of such election precincts as may be set up or modified by the state of Alaska for all city elections, both regular and special.
I thought we just voted, or the, on changing operating hours to polling hours, and we were still discussing that.
I think that was just a, a second, that she had changed her original motion to that with the concurrence of the second. So that, that's where I was at on it.
I, I thought we were just amending operating hours.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So we can go back to discussion on that.
Let's reconsider, let's reconsider that then, please. So as it is, as it is right now, was the, so let's go back, reset to approve the operating, the polling open, during open polling hours, and then go back to amendment.
You're wanting them to reconsider this, or do you want to?
No, no, we get, we had, so that was sort of, let's, let's treat it as an amendment to the amendment, okay?
All right.
Instead of a concurrence of the second, so now we're back to the main motion on the amendment. Councilmember next, then.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I do have a question on, on A, there's a second sentence, it doesn't look like it's, should be part of code, but I think the first sentence makes sense. Voting devices and machines will be used for regular, special elections unless determined to be not practical by the clerk, period. Then it goes into the laws of the state concerning voting devices and machines are incorporated in this chapter as, as full, I'm not sure that the second sentence is needed, I would amend, move to amend to, to strike the second sentence.
Sir, second. I guess I'll defer to the sponsor of the, of this original amendment. Ms. Winger, do you have any objection to that, or I guess the purpose of why that sentence was in there that you want to advocate for?
This was the pre-existing code that I was hoping to retain, so this had been in our code previously. I don't have concern to strike that. My concern lies in adding this, the additional C component.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Naxdat and with Councilmember Winger. I, I would, I could support this if we strike the second sentence, because a lot of what we're, we're doing in this ordinance is we're, we're restating we're applicable state law and everything, and then we're aligning more with the, with the borough whose, whose voting devices and machines we're gonna be using. So I, I think your, I can support your amendment as previously amended without the second sentence. I think it's kind of like not really needed.
Right, could there maybe be a request for unanimous consent on that amendment? Mr. Bloom?
Sorry, I'll wait till this, this amendment passes. I have one more suggestion, and I'm just seeing this language for the first time, but I have one more that I don't think's gonna be controversial.
Okay.
Can I ask who seconded that motion to strike the second sentence in A?
That was Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thank you.
And I'm just hoping one of them will request unanimous consent.
Request unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, that amendment is, is approved. Mr. Bloom?
Mayor Gabriel, I have one other requested amendment to the language, and it's on C, it says, computers and voting machines may not be plugged into phone, internet, Bluetooth, or fiber optic. You don't plug in to Bluetooth, or, and I think there's other types of technology that wouldn't require a plug-in. I think Councilmember Winger, if it said connected to phone, internet, Bluetooth, that would be a better approach.
Ms. Ostraner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I was actually thinking along the same line as, as Mr. Bloom, and I believe that the intent of that amendment is to make sure that the voting machines are not connected to any device outside of the polling place. My concern with limiting it to phone, internet, Bluetooth, you know, that you still could be connected to a wireless mesh, or a point-to-point network, something like that, so if it read, computers and voting machines may not be connected to any device outside of the polling place, I think that would accomplish the intent of the motion and not leave holes in it potentially for someone to connect to some other type of technology.
Councilmember Winger?
I agree. Would you like me to make a motion?
Yes, please.
Like to make a motion to amend C, computers and voting machines may not be connected to any device during polling opening hours.
Second, requesting unanimous consent.
Could she repeat that, please? I think that was different than what I wrote down.
Yeah, I think Mr. Ostraner suggested outside of the polling place, but Ms. Winger would be, it would be not connected to any device, period, through the polling out, when polling is open. And I think that's her intent. Obviously, when polling is closed is when they connect to download or upload their results. Correct me if I'm.
Yes, that is correct, just no connecting of devices. Yes, that is correct. Just no connecting of devices during the opening of polling hours. I do understand that once polling halves close, that they need to be able to submit their numbers.
Can you restate your motion?
Like a motion to amend C, "Computers and voting machines may not be connected to any device during opening of polling hours."
What kind of device? I'm sorry, any device?
Yes.
Second.
Mayor Gabriel, if I may, is it important to say outside the polling place so that, I think the machines are connected together?
They're connected together, they're connected to printers, they're connected to...
So I think it's important to, sorry, it's important to include the language outside the polling place, so that we're not... And I think that's what you want, right? It's not connected to any outside source, but they can be connected together to printers and et cetera?
I would not like to see them connected during poll opening.
I don't think they'll, I don't think they'll work if they're not connected to printers. What I'm saying is, you want them not connected to any outside device, right?
Yes.
I think the language, the way you read the amendment prohibits us from connecting them to printers or other things inside the polling place.
I was advised to say "any device," so how would, can we have an at ease for a few minutes to work on this language, please?
Let's take a brief at ease here. Councilmember Winger?
Yes, I would like to withdraw that motion.
And I concur, that is the second, because she's going to make a replacement.
I'd like to offer an amendment and keep current code 6.25.015, "Voting Devices and Machines." A will read, "Voting devices and machines will be used for all regular and special elections unless determined not to be practical by the clerk." B, "The election official shall designate the computers to be used in counting the ballots and may negotiate in contract with Kenai Peninsula Borough or a private computer service for needed computer services." And C, which would be added, would state, "Any device connected to computers or voting machines must be a part of a closed system during the opening of polling hours."
Second, requesting unanimous consent.
Your unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objection? Seeing none, that amendment is approved. Councilmember Winger, I think you got another proposed amendment for polling locations?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to retain section 6.20.70, "Polling Locations." A would read, "The city of Kenai shall be composed of such election precincts as may be set up or modified by the State of Alaska for all city elections, both regular and special. The polling places will be as designated by the State of Alaska Division of Elections." B would be an adding, "Changes of the polling places may be accomplished by the council by motion, resolution, or ordinance." And we'd add the one, "A polling place may only be changed in a catastrophic event such as flooding, long power outages, or unsafe building damage and/or fire."
Sir, second.
Second.
I guess I do have a question. Does that conflict with B above? I mean, just, I haven't really had a chance to digest this, but you had, "Changes of polling place may be accomplished by council." And then the next one is, "A polling place may only be changed in a council." It's, to me, it's a little confusing, but, oh, but... Is there any other discussion on the amendment, Vice Mayor Winger?
Sure, I don't support this amendment. I'd refer the council to the page 105 of the packet, where the co-sponsor discusses this. So part of my reason has to do with, you know, what the clerk said, that she talked with the Borough Clerk, and they agreed that it's problematic to have those restrictions on polling locations, because the city, state, and Borough all need to be consistent in their polling places. And if one agency needs to change for a particular reason, they kind of got to work that out so that there isn't voter confusion. And there are no provisions for polling places changes in Borough Code. And so what that means is, it's kind of, and the code that we're proposing, it really leaves it up to the election supervisor, which is the city clerk, if there's, if there's a disaster, like an example of Seward, where there was a flood, you know, right at the time of the election, so they had to change a polling place. If you have to go to council and get, you know, an ordinance, which takes two meetings, or a resolution, you know, which has notice in a public hearing, you know, and that happens right before the election, you're going to have a, you're going to tie their hands, and you're going to have a situation where, you know, you're going to have to have an emergency meeting, and the clerk's already doing an election, and she's got to do a special emergency meeting. So, you know, they, so, so, you know, by taking that out of the code, we're leaving it to the people that the council hires, the person that the council hires, the clerk, to manage that situation of a catastrophe. Another example is, is if, you know, and this isn't an emergency situation, but say like Cars, you know, says, "We're not going to rent our space to you for Precinct 1", you know, then they got to negotiate something. Okay, maybe you could get an ordinance to approve a new lease for that space, but if it happens right before the election, it's problematic again. So, you know, I think it's better just to leave dealing with the polling place to the clerks who have to coordinate with the state and the Borough and keep the city council out of it. So that's why I would oppose that amendment.
I'll let Councilmember Winger speak to it, since it's her amendment, but I would be curious about the, maybe the purpose or, you know, underlying reason, maybe why she brought this forward. Councilmember Winger?
The reason why I felt that this was important is because this goes away completely, and in this new code, it changes to polling opening and polling closing. However, we did see this in the Lance Pruitt House race in Anchorage. There was a polling location change. It ended up in a lawsuit, because it came down to 12 votes. And he believed it was impacted by the last-minute polling location. So to be preventative of getting ourselves in that situation, I just want some parameters of what polling locations changes could be, because in this new code, this goes away completely and isn't addressed at all. But we have seen in a current election, in Anchorage, a major election, where the change of polling location really came into question, resulted in lawsuits, and a lot of heartburn amongst splitting the citizens. So I thought changing of polling places can be done, but in a catastrophic event, which would be the flooding that Seward had, or long power outages, unsafe buildings from earthquakes or fire. So again, I just thought this was important, because we have seen this situation in current, recent elections.
Maybe just from clarification from Ms. Hines. So it is codified that we do publish where those location, polling locations are. That's in code, and when that we open, is that correct?
I would have to review what exactly it is. We do publish where the polling locations are, yes. And the times that the polling locations are open, we provide their addresses. Polling locations are, are... We try our very hardest to keep them consistent year over year. Prior to 9/11, all three polling places were at the Armory. After 9/11, we were no longer able to use the Armory. So we had to separate, we had to move them. When the pandemic hit, we were no longer able to use the senior center and the fire departments. And so we had to move ours, which was in the senior center. We were able to secure another spot in the mall. This was all before the election ever happened, before the polling places were advertised. So we were able to get the information updated. Seward had a flood. I mean, I don't want to be stuck in a situation where the Borough is moving their polling place because of a reason that's not included in this list, and we're trapped in this spot with no election equipment, and having to conduct our election on our own in this spot, which doesn't, which the Borough's moved for some reason that's not included on this list.
Very good, thank you. And I guess, yeah, I mean, from my perspective, I know that, you know, I've always voted at the senior center for years until, until there was the pandemic, obviously. So polling, polling locations do change. I know one year, my wife was notified she had to vote somewhere else. I don't know if that line went like right through our bedroom or something, but it was kind of a weird deal. But they do change it periodically for certain reasons, and it could be because of tenant, you know, issues with the tenant space and things like that. So anyway, as long as it's, they're published ahead of the election, and everybody has due notice of where they'll be voting, I guess I'll be, I'll not be supporting this. Councilmember Nexted?
I too won't be supporting this, and I'm always leery of lists. And there's a list at the end here, and it lists a number of things. It doesn't include earthquake, volcanic eruption. We get creative here, we can think of about 20 more things. But they're not on the list. So at any rate, like the mayor said, these things are published well in advance, and there'd be a good reason to move a polling place, but it will be noticed well. So I will not be supporting this.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Glendine?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Is it not in our code and our ability that if there is a volcanic eruption, a tsunami, or a long power outage, that you may call a special meeting under special circumstances to address a catastrophe?
I believe I have the authority to call a special meeting for just about any reason. There's a very broad range of reasons to call a special meeting.
So this is, this is nothing different than what you have the authority to do already?
Correct, although I don't think this would necessarily fall on the premise of a special meeting. Ms. Hines?
I would just note that in the situation of the Seward flooding, the flood happened the night of, the night before. So we'd be calling a special meeting at 6:00 in the morning, the day of the election, to get the polling place changed.
And in that, I mean, we're talking about these sort of, you know, outlier events, I think. And I imagine in that particular case, there were probably signs that directed people where to go, and there was very clear instructions. My, I can tell you personally, my experiences with the clerks is they're very, here in our, our, in our borough, in our city, all of our cities, that I'm, in the peninsula, and even across Alaska, that's, that's their thing, is, is elections, and they want to make sure that they don't, that they are handled professionally, with integrity, and, and don't reflect bad, badly on their office. So, I believe if there was a catastrophic event, there would be the clerk's office jumping through hoops to make sure everybody was noticed, properly noticed, of where they, where they needed to go to cast their ballot. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Petty?
No.
Councilmember Askin?
No.
Councilmember Naxted?
No.
Mayor Gabriel?
No.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
No.
Motion fails.
Counsel, we have substitute ordinance 3224-2021 is amended. Any further discussion? Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. What I would like to do is postpone the final vote on this ordinance until our next meeting, first meeting in October, to address the concerns of our citizens, that they would ask more time to chew over the, the large ordinance that we have, we have just passed of many, 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 many pages. This will not materially change the, the effect of, of our ordinance, it will just give our citizens time to, to, to look at the actions that we have taken tonight, and, and provide more comment. Thank you.
I guess I would ask if you would, since you made the motion, would you, are you requesting a third public hearing also?
That would invite, that would invite a third public hearing, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Mayor Gabriel? I would just point out that I will be working an 18-hour day on the fifth, conducting an election, and I will be at the end of a 12-hour day at the city council meeting on the sixth. It's, it's one of the worst meetings that I've, I always experience every year, so I just want to, if there's going to be a lot of questions, and it would be preferable to be dealing with those questions prior to the sixth, so that I can prepare a response and not have to be on my game at, when I'm exhausted. Please, thanks.
If we do go with this, would it be better, just, just thinking, I don't, I'm not sure where I'm at with it yet personally, but would it be better to do the second meeting in October?
I don't think so.
Okay. Councilmember next, then.
We've, thanks to Vice Mayor Malloy, you know, we've had a, we've had a second hearing, which we didn't, wouldn't normally have to do. We discussed it when it was introduced, we had a lengthy work session, and everything was, you know, advertised, we were on Zoom, and I do appreciate the folks here that would like to have some more time, but there may be two more people out there that aren't here tonight, that at the next meeting might not have heard about it, and it goes on, and I think that, you know, it's, it's time to, to move forward, and, and certainly if there's something that you, the two of you, if you find something, you know, bring it forward, and it's, it's still an amendment we could, we could make to, to this, this code later on, it's not, you know. Whenever.
I think, I think what, I think what council member, next, I don't mean to speak for it, but you can bring it to a council member for a proposed amendment that, you know, that would be through the process. We don't usually engage, public hearings close, we don't do back and forth, this is, it's not now in our court, it belongs to the body, but I think that's what, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what you're trying to get at.
Thank you. Yes, it can be brought forward by any council member, or somebody from the public to a council member.
Correct.
Certainly to the clerk, and then she will notify us.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yeah, just a question for Councilor Naxted. So, so you're suggesting that this ordinance does not take place until the first day of the next year, so any time between now and then, this concern could be, could be addressed, that an amendment could be made, is that, is that what you're saying? An amendment to the, to the ordinance?
Councilmember next, then.
Perhaps that's a question for the clerk or the attorney?
Well, I, I guess I'll interrupt that by saying that anybody from the general public could request an amendment to an ordinance, or, you know, an ordinance, or code through a, through a member of the body, or, you know, administration, or through the clerk's office, that's always an option for all of, everything we have, so I think this is a sort of a circular discussion.
No, I, I think, I think it's instructive for our participants, is that, in that, any time we can offer adjustments to legislation.
Sure.
And this is, okay, and, and so if everybody understands that, then we can proceed with, with our, with our deliberations tonight, and, and view this as an ongoing process.
Yeah, and what we're going to do is, we're going to stick with the amendment on the floor right now, which was, or, a motion to, to postpone to our first meeting in October, which, Councilmember Winger, or, I'm sorry, were you done, Councilmember Glenn Dunning? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, 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 I, you're, you're, you're exhibiting a chance to clarify, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Winger?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I, I would support the postponement. I did ask maker of the motion for more time on this. We heard from people in our community that we serve and we represent our constituents, and they're asking us to take more time on this. This is a lengthy document, we're not just addressing one little part of code, we're addressing many aspects of the code. I welcome the public input and discussion on this, and I, I would support myself having more time. I think, I think that there's still questions or concerns to iron out. We had a great work session. I know a lot of people have put a lot of time and effort into that, and that's very much appreciated. However, when we're doing something in the current world climate we're in, on election codes and changes to this extent of over 100-page document, asking for more time to go over it, to be fully comfortable with changes, I think is within our due diligence for our constituents that have asked for more time.
Any further discussion, Councilmember Askin?
Just a question is, when we undertook this endeavor, was there a time, a timeline, were we supposed to have it addressed by tonight, or, or could it go further?
Vice Mayor Malloy?
So, if that's a question for me, you know, I, I have to stick with my co-sponsor, who says that, you know, October doesn't work for her in terms of a postponement. For, you know, as you know, the, the ordinance if passed tonight with all the amendments that we've made, doesn't take effect until January one, and, and, you know, if there are other issues with, say, it passes in this forum with these amendments tonight, if there are other issues with it that council members want to address, you know, they can propose an ordinance to amend it in whatever particular, particular way that they're, that they're proposing to be amended, and, and that might be an easier process for focusing on those amendments, because you would have a new code, and then you would say that, well, there's this part of it that I think that means more work, and, and, you know, the next election, regular election that this would apply to would be in October 2022. And, you know, and there, and so, you know, there hasn't been a special election while I've been on the city council, so I think that should give, you know, the public more, you know, in other words, you're, you're able to bring forward in ordinance to address other issues that are still outstanding, you know, so I, I have to go with what my co-sponsor is suggesting as far as tonight is concerned.
Councilmember Askin?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Malloy. Based on that information, I'm probably not going to be in support of postponing, and a new ordinance can be initiated later.
Councilmember Winger?
Some of my concern about this is we keep hearing that this is a housekeeping to align more with the Kenai Peninsula Borough Codes. However, when we look at the adoption of this, we are pulling code from the city of Soldatna, the municipality of Anchorage, so a lot of our code isn't necessarily, this new code isn't aligning with the borough code, it's actually aligning with other municipalities and districts. I have spoke into some borough assembly representatives who put forth their election code, and they didn't copy and paste from any other district, municipality, or city. They wrote their own code, so if we are doing this to align with the borough code for housekeeping purposes, I would like to make sure the code that we're pulling isn't from Fairbanks, municipality, Matsu, Anchorage, or the city of Soldatna. I'd like this to be borough adopted, state statute, or our own Kenai Peninsula Borough Codes. Those are definitely some of my concerns, when we talk about this being a housekeeping document, but we look at that. I do have additional concerns, so if we weren't able to postpone this, I wouldn't be able to support this.
Further discussion on postponement? I guess, I'll, I don't support the, the motion to postpone. This was, you know, this has been on our docket for a while. We, I've, I've personally been through this. You know, when, when it first came out, Vice Mayor Malloy and I were texting back for, so definitely warrants of work session, you know, and complete agreement. This wasn't anything that somebody's trying to do under the cover of darkness or anything like that, and I, and I know the climate these days, it's, it's sad that we, we don't trust our local government on election issue, because there's something that may or may not, you know, be a sort of an underlying reason or hidden agenda for an action that's taken up here. But I've gone through it, I, with a fine-tooth comb, because I, I do kind of look at it from that perspective of, okay, what's going on, or maybe even not even, I think called unintended consequences, which can happen with legislation passed. I'm, I'm, you know, very comfortable with the way this was put together. You know, we, we don't do, we don't do mass mail-out voting, which if this, if that was in there, I'd be opposed to it, because I don't, I don't agree with that. The borough doesn't, and the, but the voters of this Kenai Peninsula Borough don't agree with mass mail-out voting. So, as Vice Mayor Malloy pointed out, there's, there was a lot of reconciliation with past practices, with our code, with the borough code, and with our charter and state law. I mean, those are all things that went into this ordinance to, you know, flesh out something that's more, that's usable. Regarding amendments, this isn't, you know, this is something that, that can be revisited, like the, the conditional use permit legislation that we just considered, you know, we, we've all talked about, yeah, that was a first step. If there's something in here that, that offends somebody to the point that it needs to be corrected, we've got a lot of time to do that. I'm comfortable moving ahead with this tonight, because I do think it's, it's, it's well done, and I don't think, I think we put, spent an appropriate amount of time for public to weigh in, and the public process, over a three-hour work session and two public hearings. So, with that, I'll close my comments, and see to anybody else I would like to on the motion to postpone. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Askin?
No.
Councilmember Naxted?
No.
Mayor Gabriel?
No.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
No.
Councilmember Petty?
No.
Motion fails.
Counsel, we have substitute ordinance 3224-2021 is amended before us, any further discussion? Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yeah, just a quick question, a process question. We excluded some former sections of code, specifically those that touch a resolution 2021-46. My, my question is, is if, if we remove something from code but incorporate it into a, a resolution, does it have the, the same, the same effect as a, as an ordinance? In other words, is it, is it now a, a, a policy decision, or, or is it something that we're, we're, we just obliquely address in a resolution, and, and not, and not consider it to be part of our code or law?
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. The resolution authorized the city manager to adopt a memorandum of agreement with the borough on the co-administration of the elections, and so the pieces that were referred to, that were taken care of by that resolution are now a part of that agreement with the, the borough. I believe that it referred to the hiring of election workers, stands out as one, one thing, and that's now a part of that agreement, that we hire the election workers together and, and pay for them together.
So, what you're saying is that it's, it's more encompassing, more, more universal, that we have a resolution adopting certain cooperative facets with the borough, rather than being in a little silo by ourselves in, in the city of Kenai?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Naxted?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
No.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
No.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Counsel, we're now on ordinance, ordinance number 32, 3238-2021, accepting an appropriating interlibrary cooperative, cooperation grant from the state of Alaska State Library for the Kenai Community Library Story Walk Project. Pleasure, counsel. Vice, oh, Councilmember Askin?
I move that we enact ordinance number 3238-2021.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3238-2021?
For on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, feature, or unmute yourself.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council, 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 councilor next, then.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I'd, I'd like to pass through the city manager, if, if we have the airport, or the, the library director here, and I know that we have a story walk that I think is kind of, they've done themselves, and this is going to be something in addition to that, and I just want to know how, how, how it's going to look initially, and how it's going to evolve.
Ms. Trostrenner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Naxted, I would love it if Ms. Wolf would enlighten both the council and myself on exactly how this new story walk's going, going to work.
Ms. Wolf, you on the floor?
Good evening, thank you. So, the story walk, we're going to be purchasing about 17 separate posts and frames, and they will be placed along a trail, or possibly even around the library. We will be working with the Parks and Rec Department, they've actually been helping us putting this grant together, and we'll be working with them figuring out where this is going to go, and hopefully, once we order those, they'll be installed, and we will then have some programming that goes along with it. So, hopefully, we'll be able to do, we're hoping between four and five different books every, every year, probably the seasons. Yep, and so I don't know if you've ever seen the story walk, it's basically, we're going to be taking a picture book, we're going to tear it apart, which we usually don't do, and then each of the pages is going to be in, in one of the frames, and so the, the program's going to be mostly our youth services librarian, who's going to be walking with the children, they're going to be doing early literacy programs, but then there's also, the, the parents by themselves can also, you know, walk along the path. But then there's also, the parents by themselves can also, you know, walk along the path. The other thing that we were hoping eventually, so this is an early literacy grants. What we're hoping to do eventually is to kind of branch out and also do some adult programming. So maybe a Halloween scary story walk or some sort of a historical story walk where we can collaborate with organizations in the city.
Thank you. Any, Councilmember Winger?
I just want to say, I think this is, I haven't heard of it before, so I think this is great. And coming out of a pandemic when kids were locked up inside, we know that physical activity is something that just, I mean, adults and kids all around are lacking. So this is a great way to get people out, maybe get them used to our trail systems. I, do you have any, are you going to send any literature about this to any of the elementary schools to get more participation? Because I know Mountain View has a high amount of kids with individual learning plans for reading needs. So I would just like to make sure that we get this extended out to the, for them to participate.
Yes, thank you, for sure. Actually, we are going to be advertising it across the board. We already have a really good relationship with the local schools and so, homeschools as well. And so we're going to be making sure that everybody knows about it. It's going to be in the media as well, so we're hoping to get the word out, for sure.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Just one more. Definitely, if we have a flyer, submit it to Ms. Bates with the Borough School District so it can get approved, and they will mass distribute it. So I know Mountain View's got like 300, 400 students. So if you get it submitted, they would be happy to mass distribute that as well. So again, thank you for doing this. I think this is just a great new thing to add in for our youth and hopefully the adults as well.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes, thank you so very much for the efforts to make this come forward. I might suggest that you speak with the gentleman, Mr. Coy West, who gave the presentation earlier today, and perhaps get that on his video opportunity. So as, I think that's a wonderful idea, what you're doing, and to get all that publicity. So I just make that suggestion. Thank you so very much.
Any further comments, questions? Thank you, Ms. Wolf, for all you do over there.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on ordinance number 3238-2021? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxte?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Council on Ordinance Number 3239-2021, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund. Police Department and accepting a grant from the Department of Justice passed through the Alaska Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force for the purchase of forensic software. Pleasure, council. Councilor Naxte?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I move to enact ordinance 3239-2021.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3239-2021? Seeing none, bring anybody online.
Online, you can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Thank you. With that, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberations from council? Councilor Naxte?
Just a quick question for the city manager. The software, the upgrade, the software, does it only do cell phones or does it do computers too? Or, you know, it says devices as, and I think it's, I just didn't know what that meant.
Ms. Rostrner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Naxte. Actually, since Mr. Ross has been here for the last four hours, I'll let him answer that question.
Chief Ross?
Mayor Gabriel, Counselor Naxte. Primarily cell phones, it will likely work on some other tablet-type devices, but I'm not sure what the list of those devices is.
Thank you, that answered your question. Okay, very good. Any further discussion on ordinance number 3239-2021? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning? Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxte?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Council on Ordinance Number 3240-2021, amend a Kenai municipal code, section 23.55.030, qualification pay. To amend the salary ranges to accurately reflect recognition, pay, and entitlements. Councilmember Naxte?
Thank you. I move to enact ordinance 3240-2021.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3240-2021?
On Zoom, you can unmute yourself or raise your hand.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments, deliberation from council? Discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxte?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're on ordinance number 3241-2021, declaring that T5 North, Range 11 West, Section 6, Seward Meridian KN 0002970. Original townsite of Kenai Lot 3, Block 8, also known as 604 Inlet Street, Kenai, Alaska, whose last record owner under Borough Assessments, Borough Assessment records was Peter F. Meising, whose address is PO Box 8134 Nikiski, Alaska, 99635-8134. An estate of Peter F. Meising, Carol de Altalivka, PO Box 498, Soldat, Alaska, 99669-0498, shall be retained by the city of Kenai for a public purpose. Pleasure, council. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Move to enact ordinance number 3241-2021.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3241-2021?
Again, on Zoom, you can unmute yourself or use your raise hand feature.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Comments from council?
There's an amendment.
Oh, that's right.
There's a blank that we need to fill in, and I did provide, I did provide the letter in the packet, but I neglected to put a memo in there, so I apologize. The blank needs to be filled in with the date, September 9th, which is the date that I sent the letter.
Okay, very good. Do I have someone, Councilmember Petty?
I make a motion to fill in the blank on the date that the clerk just stated.
Second, I request unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Yeah, September 9th, 2021, 2021. Was that the intent of the motion maker? Was to add the year 2021?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Very good.
And I concur with that.
Awesome. Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, the amendment passed. Any further discussion on ordinance number 3241-2021? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxte?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, we have ordinance 3242-2021, declaring that township 5 North, Range 11 West, Section 5, Seward Meridian KN 0002970, original townsite of Kenai. Lot 3, Block 20, also known as 905 Mission Avenue, Kenai, Alaska, whose last record owner under Borough Assessment records was Keith K. Knight. General delivery, Kenai, Alaska, shall be retained by the city of Kenai for a public purpose. Pleasure, council. Councilor Naxte?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to enact ordinance 3242-2021.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3242-2021?
Again, anyone on Zoom can use the raise hand feature or unmute yourself? Nope.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Is there a proposed amendment on this one?
It's the same day, yeah.
Councilor Naxte, or Councilmember Petty, please.
Yes, I'd like to put the date in, September the 9th, 2021.
Second, requesting unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested on the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing none, the amendment is approved? Councilor Naxte?
I think that it's something that can be just taken care of.
I think I see what you're saying.
Pardon me?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, something administratively, I was just asking the city manager. The KN number is the same on this ordinance and the previous one, and they may need to be different. And I don't, I think we know which properties we're talking about, so if that just gets corrected, otherwise, I think.
Can that be done administratively? Because that was included in our packet as far as separating.
I'm getting a positive nod from the city attorney.
I see Scott shaking his head, so.
Yes.
Ms. Rostrner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, that's the designation, the plat number. The legal description included in the title is sufficient that we know which plat it would go with, so I would certainly argue that we could change that administratively.
That's what I was thinking. Okay, very good. So we have ordinance number 3242-2021 is amended before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Petty?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxte?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Council, we're on item D8, ordinance number 3245-2021, authorizing a budget transfer in increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the Congress Housing Fund for the purchase and installation of equipment to provide residents basic television wireless internet service. Pleasure, council. Councilmember Naxte?
Thank you. I move to enact ordinance 3245-2021.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to ordinance number 3245-2021?
Anybody on Zoom can use the raise hand feature or unmute yourself?
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. I will note that there's a recommended amendment for this ordinance. Yep, no problem. It was in the laydown under item D8.
Is it in the laydown?
Yes. Councilor Naxte?
Okay, I move administration, I move the following amendment, amendment, ordinance 3245-2024, Section 2, to increase appropriation retained earnings to $12,228, and to increase the repair and maintenance to $9,599, to increase the total for the increased appropriation to $12,228.
Second. Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, the amendment is approved. That leaves us, ordinance number 3245-2021 is amended before us. Any further, Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yeah, just a brief comment. I want to say, I appreciate the memo in the packet from Kathy Romaine, the senior center director who's here, and also the work by Terry Eubank and Dan Castamore to come up with this option. And, you know, it might save some of us some other work who are going to be dealing with the same issue. So thank you all.
Yes, Ms. Rostrner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I just wanted to make sure council was aware that the timing of this installation could be compromised to a certain degree. We had a difficult time finding an electrical contractor that was able to pull the wiring for this installation. We do have a contractor now that has signed up to do the work. However, it could be until the end of October before that work is completed. So there may be a period here where some of the tenants, where the tenants in Vintage Point do not have internet services. They will have the TV services that we're going to be providing through the antenna, but there could be a delay of up to a month until they get the full internet services.
Councilmember Petty?
This does not disrupt the internet service that's over at the senior centers, so they would still have access to that availability.
Ms. Rostrner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Petty, yes, they would still have the internet at the senior center.
I guess I got a quick question. Is there, I'm not, I'm not an IT guy by any stretches, but is there the ability to do a temporary wireless router to get them internet service while they wait?
Mayor Gabriel, I think it would be problematic to do that. You know, this, this project itself puts in three wireless access points per floor of Vintage Point to get them sufficient access. So providing something temporarily, I think, would be very difficult.
Okay, very good. And I just, just thinking of, I can go without internet for a while, but my family members can't, so. Any further discussion on ordinance numbers 3245-2021?
Yeah, just a question, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Is this, this basic television internet, is this, is this part of their, part of their rent, part of their cost of being there? And if so, if it's not available, can there be an adjustment made to their, to their costs?
Ms. Rostrner?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Glenn Dunning. Ms. Romaine is here, and she's, we're probably bordering on the point where she should probably come in and provide that information.
Ms. Romaine, you're on the floor.
Thank you. Mayor Gabriel, council members, this has been a long process. It's been, our tenants are cool as cucumbers over this once we talked to them about what we were planning initially. We have not made mention until after tonight when the internet will be coming, but the internet is not part of their standard agreement that we have in place. Basic cable television is, but cable television is going away. Not due to our fault, but it's just going away. So they will be able to have television. It's a good package, about 18 channels. I've looked into what it offers, a lot of reruns, a lot of old channel reruns, and we're excited about it. There's even music channels, which a lot of them are concerned about. They listen to music all day long. So the ones that have internet will be able to keep their internet until ours takes effect. Unfortunately, they won't have television, but they will have internet, and streaming is very much available. So we'll be teaching them. We're, matter of fact, we're working with a library to have classes, and they'll be sending some of their techies over to have streaming classes and what that will take place.
Councilmember Winger?
I just want to say, I think that's a great aspect on having those classes with the seniors. I know Alaska Communications, when they were trying to get a lot of the seniors into smartphones, they, when I worked there, we would actually hold smartphone classes, and it would be dominant seniors that couldn't see trying to do it. And it was just a breath of fresh air for them to get that help and navigate it. So I just want to say thank you for doing that because I know, first, you know, it might not be needed for some, but it is needed for others. So thank you for doing that.
Any further comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Romaine. Been a trooper. Maybe we should have moved that one up to you for you. Any further discussion on ordinance number 3245-2021? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Naxte?
Yes.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes.
Councilmember Winger?
Yes.
Councilmember Glenn Dunning?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yes.
Councilmember Petty? Motion passes.
Thank you. We're on item D9, Resolution Number 2021-57, declaring a right-of-way for a 60-foot by 254-foot portion of the frontage road along Wildwood Drive as dedicated on Lot 4, A Block 8, Black Gold Estates, subdivision number 2, plat KN 84-76, and is set forth on the attachment Exhibit A, is not needed for a public purpose and consenting to its vacation. Councilor Naxte?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-57.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to Resolution Number 2021-57?
On Zoom, you can unmute yourself or raise your, use the raise hand feature.
Seeing none, we'll bring back the council, comments, deliberation, councilmember Nextet?
Thank you, um, yeah, at our last meeting, we, we did something kind of across the street, part of the same parent subdivision that was platted in nineteen fifty-four, and I think I said we'd probably be seeing more things happening in this subdivision. I didn't think it was going to happen at our next meeting, but this is just another example, and, uh, I'll definitely support this.
Any further discussion, councilmember Glenn Denning?
Yeah, uh, just, just for, uh, information, this is the last step, uh, in, in this process, right? We, we approve this, this, uh, vacation, and then it's, it's a done deal, the, the process is complete?
Mr. Osterner?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Gabriel, councilmember Glenn Denning, it, it has been approved by the borough, so once we approve it, it will be finalized.
Thank you, for the record.
Yep, any further discussion?
Request unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, resolution number twenty-one twenty, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash fifty-seven is adopted. Last up, we have D ten, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-eight, authorizing agreement for professional engineering services to provide construction documents for sewer lift station upgrades. Vice Mayor Malloy?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel, uh, move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one fifty-eight.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to speak to resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-eight? Do we have anybody online?
On Zoom, you can unmute yourself or use the raise hand feature.
Thank you, we'll bring you back to council, comments, deliberation, council? Councilmember Nextet?
Yeah, I definitely support this. One of the highest maintenance items in the city is, is the lift stations, and I think that this will go a long ways to, uh, help relieve that.
Thank you. Any further discussion, councilmember Glenn Denning?
Yes, uh, I, I also will chime in and say that, uh, lift stations, of course, are important to our, to our, our process, and, uh, I, I know that we've been working hard to, uh, to come to a, uh, successful and favorable operational status and standard for the system, and I wholeheartedly, uh, support this.
Thank you, councilmember Winger?
Um, I too, this, um, agreement was entered before I was serving on the city council. Um, I support this wholeheartedly. Um, I think this is just a valuable part of our infrastructure, and I support this.
Vice Mayor Malloy?
Requesting unanimous consent.
Thank you, unanimous consent was requested, is there any objection? Seeing none, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-eight is adopted. So council, that moves us to G eight, G seven, discussion, uh, for request to schedule a joint work session for draft land management plan. Uh, Mr. Osterner?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. So, uh, we provided council with, uh, each of you with a copy of the draft land management plan. I think the first time I mentioned that we needed to do this as a city was in, uh, March of two thousand seventeen, two, two months after I started. Didn't think it would take four years to get here, but we are here. It's been a, a massive undertaking, I'll tell you that much, and, and you'll certainly learn much more about that at the work session, about the amount of time and energy and the number of iterations we went through to get to this point. Uh, but tonight, I just wanted to provide you with a copy of this, and then also ask if, uh, council would consider scheduling a joint work session. This joint work session would be with the council, also planning zoning, airport, parks and rec, and the harbor commission. At that work session, administration will provide a presentation on the plan. Um, just for your information, after that work session, we have an, an entire schedule that would take this plan to each one of those commissions separately, and then ultimately back to the council in the form of an ordinance ultimately, uh, for adoption, which would then adopt this plan, uh, for the city for the use going forward. But the, the main thing, uh, tonight again, is to ask council if you would schedule a work session. We'd like to have the work session for the week following the, the general or the municipal election, um, so that we could invite the two councilmember elects to participate in that first work session as well. So I believe that is October, the week of October tenth, maybe.
And how much, how much time do you anticipate, uh, Mr. Osterner?
Um, I would anticipate that, uh, we would need at least a, a couple of hours, um, for the work session. It could be shorter than that, it, it depends on, uh, how much participation we get from the different commissions, but I think providing, uh, a window of two hours, um, would be appropriate.
I guess another question I have, considering the number of other folks involved, is there, with this, would be, would, would we be able to accommodate everybody in, in chambers here, do you think?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Gabriel, I think I, I'd ask, uh, Jamie, uh, if we could accommodate. I know we've talked about it a little bit internally, um, but she might be able to speak to that better as far as how the, the chambers would be set up to accommodate, if the majority of those members from those different commissions participated.
Ms. Heinz?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I haven't really thought about it much.
And it was just a process question?
I certainly think that we probably have enough tables. Um, I, we could also potentially, um, talk to the Chamber of Commerce and see if we could borrow their space.
That's what I, that's kind of where I was going with it, is thinking maybe if we, just because if we get the public, um, involved too, so. Um, so that'll, that'll be something that we could be clarified if, if, on the invite. Councilmember Winger, see your light on?
Yes, thank you, um, I was just wondering if we would be able to give one of these copies to the candidates, so, um, I know we're waiting to do this for the elected candidates, um, but we'll have plenty of time to review this, and they'll be new, getting their footing. Um, would we be able to provide this to them ahead of that?
Mr. Osterner?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Gabriel, councilmember Winger, there's only eight copies in existence now, but there should be more by tomorrow, so yes, I'll make sure that we do get, um, a copy, or offer a, a copy to each one of the, the candidates.
Thank you.
So the election's on the fifth. So I presume you're, um, looking at, are you thinking somewhere around the, the middle of the month, Mr. Osterner?
Uh, Mayor Gabriel, I was thinking that following week, uh, eleventh to the fifteenth would be ideal, if that works for folks' schedules. It, it could go to the following week, um, as well. Um, we would like to, potentially, if possible, bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of October thirteenth, but that could be pushed to the, the twenty-seventh as well, so. I mean, ideally, we'd have the work session on somewhere between the election and the twelfth, so we could get it to the commission on the thirteenth. But again, that could be pushed to the twenty-seventh to just push our schedule back a little bit.
So how about the, well, there's a planning and zoning meeting on the thirteenth, it looks like, beautification on the twelfth, and we got Harbor Airport on the fourteenth, is that right? Yeah, that's what I was going to say, how about the eleventh?
The eleventh is Columbus Day, I just want to point that out. We are open, but it is.
I'd like to say it's also Indigenous Peoples' Day, says my calendar.
Um, what, so what about the fifteenth? How's everybody doing there?
I would prefer the eleventh to the fifteenth.
I would just like to say there is no school on the fifteenth, so the eleventh would be better for me.
Okay. Councilmember Glenn Denning?
Yes, the, the eleventh would, would work, uh, somewhere in this time period after this. I'm, uh, contemplating some geriatric repair, so, uh, maybe, uh, I'll just kind of ride along in your coattails and, and fit in the best I can, thank you.
Okay, so are we all in agreement in the eleventh, five PM? Vice Mayor Malloy?
Yeah, that certainly works, um, and, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to, you know, participate in the work session, it's something I've been interested in. Um, and for the candidates, I think it's great that they all have a packet and, and, um, you know, ahead of the election, so they can talk about it as needed, um, and for whoever gets elected to be there. Um, and just to note that, uh, the council doesn't take any action, uh, at a work session. Um, you know, we, we, we don't take action at work sessions, so the newly-elected council members will, um, be voting on whatever comes out of the work session, you know, so, um, just for their information.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Malloy, okay. And I just presume we'll be sending out a notification to the other, um, commissions, five PM? And, uh, uh, location, uh, to, to be determined, TBD? But more than likely, hopefully, over the, if they don't have an event over at the visitor center, councilmember Winger?
Is this, um, just for scheduling, is this an hour long or two hour long?
At least two hours, I would plan on two hours at least.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay, that was easy. Next up, we have item G eight, discussion, set a special meeting for city clerk candidate review. So, um, as you may recall, on our last meeting, I sort of roughed out a roadmap of, uh, where we're going to be going with, uh, our recruitment and the hiring of our new city manager, or city clerk, sorry. I'm getting, that's, you're right, yes, it was late for you, it's getting late for me, I can tell you that. So first off, uh, uh, Ms. Heinz handed everybody, uh, you know, some, some draft questions, and, uh, when would you like, and, and you asked that if there's any amendments, those, are we getting back to you? When would you like to see?
I was hoping to get them back bef, tonight, so that we could get them shredded.
Oh, oh, gotcha. Yeah, I haven't looked at them either. I'd like to take a look. Do you, do you trust us to shred them ourselves, or?
I'll, uh, I'll take them back tonight, and I'll figure out something else to do.
Okay, yeah, because I'd, I would like to take a little bit of time and maybe, maybe go through them.
You all can blame me for this.
What's that?
I said you all can blame me for the late night.
Yeah. Or, or maybe we could take pictures of them and then give these back to the hard copies? Sorry. So I guess, Ms. Heinz will be getting those to us, probably via email, I suppose? Via email now?
I'm unsure, I will seek guidance.
Okay. At some point, Ms. Heinz will let us know how we're going to get those and maybe review those and get them back as quickly as we can, so we can move forward. So the purpose of this discussion item is that we need to set a, a meeting, um, a special meeting where we'll be able to, uh, review the finalized questions for the interview, and then also, um, in the meantime, we do have a number of applicants, and I presume we'll be getting those applications, um, to us prior to this meeting that we can review, so we're prepared for the meeting, is that correct?
Correct, they'll be, they'll be published as a normal packet would be.
Okay, so we'll get our, our candidate applications that we can review, uh, go through them, and at, and the point of the meeting is to, again, finalize the questions, the interview questions, and then, um, try to whittle down the, you know, sort of set the number of applicants that we'd like to interview. You should all have by then a chance to review the, the applicants, and then set a date for interviewing the applicants.
Mayor Gabriel?
Yes?
We're not going to set the questions, we don't want the questions to be a part of a public meeting, so that they can't access the questions.
Oh, I thought we were doing that at executive session.
We can't do it in an executive session.
Oh, sorry, I misunderstood.
It doesn't qualify, so we will be getting the questions, uh,
So that'll be outside that?
Prior to the special meeting.
Outside the special meeting, okay, I stand corrected. So, a special meeting to, um, determine how many candidates we're going to hire, or how many, how many candidates we're going to review, how many we're going to interview, and then the dates to set for the interviews, okay? Now, just so you, everybody knows, I'll, I'll be gone from the twenty-second to the thirtieth, which is, um, I believe next Wednesday. So, we could probably, I would be available Monday night, or no, we're doing the magic.
Can I ask a question? So, can I ask a question? When, when is the application period closing and, and I'll be available?
The application period closed on Monday, the thirteenth.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, you said the twenty-second?
Yeah, which I think is that Wednesday. No, I was thinking maybe Monday, I was thinking Monday at six o'clock for the special meeting.
Monday, the twentieth?
How much time do you need in the public, for public notice?
It's tight.
Will that work? Because it's either going to be Monday or Tuesday or after the thirtieth.
I have a prior commitment on the twenty-first that evening, so I would be unable to attend.
Did you say the twenty-first or twentieth?
The twenty-first, I'd be able to attend the twentieth.
Okay, twentieth's good, every, is everybody okay with the twentieth at six PM? Vice Mayor Malloy?
So, uh, I'm actually getting up really early tomorrow morning to leave on a vacation, and I'll be back the twenty-eighth, it's the first one I've taken, um, in more than two years. That being said, uh, I can send in, you know, some comments, maybe by email to the clerk.
I was uncomfortable with public noticing it for the twentieth, so, um, if we want to go.
So.
I won't be back till the thirtieth?
So, just to.
And I'm not sure what time I get back on the thirtieth. That's a Saturday. Oh, September thirtieth.
Mayor Gabriel, I apologize, I think I interrupted Mayor, Vice Mayor Malloy.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, Vice Mayor Malloy?
That, that's okay, um, I was going to say that, uh, you know, I, I could provide whatever my recommendations are for candidates to, uh, evaluate if it was, you know, to, to interview, if it was during a time period, you know, before the twenty-eighth when I'm gone, and then you, you can do with that whatever you want, you know, as far as who you all decide to interview.
Well, it doesn't sound like you can do the public notice before the twentieth, is that correct?
Uh, I'm refreshing my memory on
Okay.
timing of special meetings.
Because if it's, if it doesn't happen on the twentieth, we might have to look at, um, October first. But then we are up against, uh, you know, Ms. Hunt, you know, people, her, her effective retirement, her separation date is, I think, the middle of December, and then you have to, we got to go through the interview process, uh, negotiation, and then they have to usually provide an, an amount of, you know, leave if they're already working, so, you know, it's, it's sort of my goal to try to have whoever we get in have some overlap time with our current clerk, Ms. Heinz.
So I still have to give three days of public notice, and I believe the paper does not publish on Saturday? They publish on Sunday, so I could get an add-in the paper on Friday. That's three days.
So Monday at six PM?
Yeah.
Does that work?
So, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So then, uh, for the city clerk, so if, if, can, can those, uh, applications, they're public, so they can be sent via email to us? And then, and then if I, I could just submit, um, some names that I think are appropriate?
Yes.
Then you guys can do with that what you want.
Okay.
Okay, so I wouldn't be hanging up your, everything?
Very good, thank you, and, and I could, I could reach out to Vice Mayor Malloy also for his one-on-one, right, for his comments, if there's follow-up?
Yes.
Any of his comments? Yeah, I'll, I'll keep in con, as we go through that process, okay? All right, are we, are we all good on that, Monday, uh, September twentieth at six PM? I'm seeing a thumbs up everywhere, awesome. Next up, uh, Commission Committee Reports, Council on Aging.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. The Commission on Aging was postponed because of lack of information agenda, and our next opportunity to meet will be on October, let's see, hold on. October the 14th. And that ends my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Airport Commission?
Thank you, Mayor. Airport Commission met on September 9th. They had one item. They recommended a special use permit to Raven Air LLC for warm storage. I think that's something they've had before. That was their only item. The airport manager did have a report, and for anybody that flies in the middle of the night between 11:00 o'clock and 5:00 in the morning, the airport will, runway will be closed from September 27th until the storm sewer, I mean, not the storm sewer, but the, yeah, the storm sewer, the piping is completed that we approved at last meeting. And their next meeting is October 14th.
Thank you. Harbor Commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Harbor Commission does not meet in October. Their next meeting is Monday, November 8th, so they'll have a new liaison. And Harbor Commission is a, you know, fund commission, if you haven't done that before, and they'll be seeing a lot of the feasibility study stuff over, you know, probably, you know, over the next year for the waterfront feasibility, so. Anyway, I encourage whoever's elected newly or current people to consider Harbor Commission when the mayor asks what, you know, commissions or committees you're interested in. Thanks.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Commission?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Parks and Recs did not meet this month. Our next meeting will be October 7th. I would just like to bring attention to Bob. He served in this position, you know, 30 years, Bob Frey, sorry, Freydees, Freydees is retiring, so he's definitely been a big key in this position for a really long time, so we will be missing him. And then one other thing is, we, the Parks and Recs work really close with the Kenai Chamber on their upcoming Kenai River Marathon Run, which is September, Saturday, September 25th. They'll be doing the dinner and bibs, and then the race starts Sunday, the 26th. And it wouldn't be the success it was without Bob helping, supporting that.
Very good. And I think I heard the pumpkin, Fall Pumpkin Festival was going to be the 16th of October, so stay tuned for that one. Planning and Zoning Commission?
I filled in for Planning and Zoning Commission for Councilmember Glendanny. A lot of the report was given by Vice Mayor Malloy. We met on the conditional use permits. We heard a lot of testimony about wanting more teeth and grit in the game, wanting repercussions for violations, the being able to set more conditions to the permits, maybe having the process printed out so people understand the process when they come in. And I am too tired to think about the rest of them off, but I know Bob covered them very well in our discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Winger, Beautification Committee?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. The Beautification Committee met last night and are planning the fall festival for October 16th. They're hoping to get pumpkins the first week in October, so they can get them distributed to the kids for their contests. And the next meeting will be the 12th of October.
Thank you. Under Many Grants Steering Committee, there is no report. On a reported mayor, I just hope everybody had a good Labor Day weekend. And I also wanted to recognize Bob Freydees. I did get an email regarding his resignation after how many years of service? 30?
Thirty plus.
Thirty, 30 plus, and it was over 30. You know, whenever you think of, you know, say, Kenai Parks and Recs Department, that's, you know, you always think of Bob. That's the guy that's always, always been there getting everything, parks ready, baseball fields going. We did, we hosted a three pond hockey tournament several years ago. That Bob was just really helped, you know, helped us kind of one of the sponsors of that, and it just was really great to see him out there over at Dobbins Park. He got everything ready to go and worked tirelessly just to pull that off, and it worked out great, so. Yeah, just, he'll be missed, and I think we got him for a little while yet, but I want to, hopefully, we'll have a retirement going away for him, so hopefully there'll be an invite that'll go out to council to attend that. I did go to the chamber luncheon today where they had the Kenai City Council candidate forum. I just, I know we've got, there's five folks that were, that have their name in the hat. Two of them weren't able to make it. James Basin and James Duffield, but three of the folks that were there here today, Ms. Askin and Ms. Sonar, and Mr. Dothan. And just wanted to say that I felt you guys were very well-prepared, and it's nice to know that we, you know, I think we're going to have a very good candidate regardless of who gets elected, and want to, you know, recognize you for putting your name in it. It takes a lot of courage to do that. And just interestingly enough, when I was kind of chuckling to myself when you guys, you know, were all sort of dialed in on the Kenai lands and our assets, which is one of our biggest assets, and then, you know, this is something that we've been, been working on for a number of years, as, actually, administration, that Paul mentioned, but I specifically remember the meeting that sort of, you know, spawned this was a gentleman that was looking at buying a piece of property, wanted to buy a piece of property across from the Kenai ice rink for a dental office, and, you know, there was a, you know, a lot of discussion about that, and, you know, comments from the local neighbors and things like that. But then that sort of morphed into this, hey, you know, maybe we should take a holistic approach instead of just a, you know, parcel by parcel, and I appreciate a lot of your comments regarding of your thoughts on that, so. And with that, I'll end my report. We'll go to Administration Report. City Manager, Mr. Ostrander.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. A couple of things tonight. Wanted to let council know that Fury, operating of Alaska, they brought in a 40-foot landing craft to our city dock last week and loaded supplies for their operations. They are very interested in utilizing the dock, possibly later this year and going into next year for potentially much larger vessels, so. Mr. Bluman and I worked with Fury to make that happen last week, but they are interested in continuing to do that. It's exciting to see someone utilizing our dock for what it's intended for. I did meet with all four of the non-incumbent city council candidates. I answered questions, provided them with information on the budget, on bluff erosion, and also on the waterfront feasibility study. Thought it was a good meeting with all four of them. Really appreciated them taking time to do that, and I always enjoy meeting with the candidates when they're running for office. Both Tony Pryor, Chief Pryor, and Deputy Chief Mark Anderson and I have been meeting with the state EMS office to discuss the city supporting the state's goal of providing mobile integrated health, and it's something the governor's office is very interested in, and DHSS is interested in. And the ultimate goal of this is to provide home health services to what they call low-acuity patients, so that we lower the number of patients at all the hospitals across the state, including, for us, it would be CPH. So we're working with them, trying to figure out if that's a program that we can launch. There's some grant funds that are available to help us do this. So the idea is to provide a mobile unit that would go to these people's houses, and in the case of low acuity, rather than transporting them to the hospital, the services would be provided there, and again, to keep that bed free at the hospital. You may be seeing legislation related to this at your next meeting on October 6th, so certainly more to come. I just wanted to let you know that those discussions have been ongoing. Kenai Silver Salmon Derby, it's going right now. I know you know $5,000 grand prize for the adult winner, $1,000 for the kids. We've decided to do the final wheel spin a little bit differently. Mayor Gabriel has volunteered to do the last spin of the tournament, which will actually be the Monday following the end, so that the derby ends on the 19th. But on Monday, we're going to have an event at 5:00 o'clock at the visitor's center outside. All of council is certainly invited to come and see that. We're hoping a bunch of participants come. The media's been invited. I think most of them will be there, so turn into an event, the last spin for the big prize. Again, Mayor Gabriel will be spinning that on the 20th at the visitor's center at 5:00 PM.
So that would be just before our scheduled?
Yeah, so you'll be in town anyway, so. And last, of course, is Bluff Stabilization Project. Pretty much same status. HDR continues to collect data needed for the design. That's going to probably take the next six to eight weeks to get all the data collected. Then the design process will get started. We're hoping to get 35% complete drawings towards the end of this calendar year, so it's exciting that we're moving forward on that. That's all I've got, but I'm happy to answer your questions.
Any questions, City Manager? Councilmember Winger?
Yes, thank you. Would you be able, I've had a lot of questions if the city would be helping and partnering with testing capabilities. Apparently Capstone's been ultimately maxed out, and they wanted to know if we had the ability to help with testing areas.
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Winger, we don't currently have the ability to test. I actually did talk to Chief Pryor about the possibility of securing a testing device. We don't really have the infrastructure right now to handle that as far as residents of the community that wanted to get tested. There was a grant that was provided to the City of Saldatna and the City of Kenai and the Borough for vaccine and testing. We utilized our portion of those funds for our mobile vaccination unit. City of Saldatna used theirs for their vaccine site that they have at the Y, I think, three days a week, something like that. And the Borough had several million dollars to support testing, so they may still have the ability to help alleviate some of that pressure that we see. So I guess that's a long answer to, we're looking at the possibility of getting a testing machine. I'm not sure if we're going to be able to utilize that just internally, or if we'd be able to extend that to the public as well. If we were to do that, we likely need to have some type of funding to help support that effort.
Thank you. And then, I know we're all tired. I have a slew of questions when it comes to our marketing or concerns. I'm not a big fan of our marketing plans, so maybe we could get together and go over some of those concerns. I'll just say, one of my concerns is I'd like to see it marketed more across the state. I didn't see a single thing, marketing Kenai anywhere I went across the state, and we're talking heavily tourist areas, and there was no documents in Valdez, Chena Hot Springs, Glen Allen, Kinnicott, Talkeetna, Toke. I could go on on all the areas that I stopped, and I would see a Come to the Kenai Peninsula book, and maybe a few of those, but not the Kenai book, so I would just like to make sure that we're really outreach as well on that. And then I do have a lot of other concerns when it comes to it. And I do like Ms. Petty's suggestion on the story walk being added into maybe a campaign video or marketing video, and maybe that could leave opening for the local end of things. We have the story walk, we have the pumpkin, we have the kites, we have the silver salmon derby. Maybe we could go off of those local events that we put on. Thank you.
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Winger, so I'd be more than happy to have that discussion. I'd like your input, certainly. In regards to the visitors' guides, the visitors' guides that are created almost, I think, without exception, in the case of the City of Kenai, it's the Chamber that publishes the visitors' guide, and they do have a distribution model, but it would be worth checking with them to see if there's other areas where they should be looking to distribute that visitors' guide, because as indicated by Coy in his presentation today, the focus of our marketing efforts has been through social media rather than printed marketing, so, but there may be an opportunity to capitalize on the efforts of the Chamber to get those in some other areas that we may be missing.
I would enjoy working more on that partnership and getting that out there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Glendanny?
Yeah, just a question. Have we, have we had a final BU Fisher report, you know, a document that comes out, or is it going to be a discussion item, or was I asleep during a meeting?
Mr. Ostrander?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Councilmember Glendanny, I would anticipate that it will come out same general timeframe as it normally does, which is typically October, early November timeframe, when we'll get that report out. So we're, we still need to compile the data, but it will be published about the same timeframe as it has been in past years.
Thank you.
Any other questions, City Manager? Seeing none, we'll go, oh, Councilmember Glendanny?
Yeah, I just note with interest that in some of our legislative activities and efforts to work with bluff erosion and other, another large endeavors, sale of land and whatnot, I'm pleased to see the engagement of our commissions and committees by administration. That's our, that's our bench for supplying candidates for city council and public service, and I'm glad to see that we're making, making an effort to have these meetings and get the, get the commissioners and committee members involved in the nuts and bolts and meat grinding of our operation. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Any other questions, City Manager? Seeing none, we'll go to the City Attorney, Mr. Bluff.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Members of council, I don't have anything to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, City Attorney? Seeing none, we'll go to the City Clerk, Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Members of council, absentee voting opens on Monday, the 20th. It's going to be here in City Hall and over in the Borough Building.
What are the hours of that?
The hours are 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, and 7 to 8 on Election Day.
So you could come over here and vote Monday, then go watch the spin of the wheel, and then go to our work session?
Yes.
Okay. Get my trap line all mapped out there. Councilmember Winger?
Yes. Jamie, when are, are we going to be getting a student representative? Have we contacted the school for a student representative for this year? I really, really would like to have a student representative.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I sent an email to school administration in the spring when they were electing their person, and I haven't heard back from them.
Yeah, I think there was a little bit of a change up there over at the high school administration about that time, so might, we could probably reach out again here at this phone. Thank you. Councilmember next up?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, Jamie, if those questions for the, for the clerk would be available in your office if we were to come in, let's say, during office hours and review them, so that might relieve some of your concerns about?
Yes, they would be.
Would that be a preferred way, by the way?
That would be very helpful, yes.
Guess they're going to make a mental note of that if they can swing by City Hall and take a look. Any other questions, City Clerk? Seeing none, we'll move to additional public comment. Is there anybody from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time? Ms. Nelson?
Yes. My reason for being here is mainly, Marion Nelson, 44629 Tower Hill Street. Just to give you a quick update on the Arts Center, but when I saw the tourism stuff coming on, you know, it sort of lights up that tourism background in myself. I, for those of you maybe don't remember, I sold advertising for the Milepost for 16 years on the whole peninsula, sat on the Tourism Marketing Council for 10 years, on the Visitor Center Board for 10 years, blah, 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 blah. And those questions are all old questions. They've all been milling around, going through the same thing, shoulder season, blah, blah, blah. It just drives me crazy. Those things, those questions have been answered for you already. Just look up what they've done and follow their suit, and tell them, ask them what's been the most successful. Well, it's, you know, kind of bounced around. It depends on the year, depends on the money, depends on the personnel. The Kenai booklet, visitor guide, has generally been in the Anchorage Airport. That's where it gets a lot of, excuse me, action coming this way, of course, as well as strategic other locations, and certainly it's been in Toke and Fairbanks and other locations, again, depending on the money, and where they think they're going to get the best bang for their buck. And whatever the State Tourism Marketing Council, or whatever it's called these days, can give you statistics on some of that, too. So, don't take... So don't take, don't take this as something new. It is old as dirt, and that's what you're paying for. The Art Center is getting close to done with that back room. I'm going to be so glad to get that off my back. The second little bathroom, for those of you who've been in there, is not done, but it's certainly made a big jump forward this week. I think that we will be able to move these things that have been stored temporarily in the jail, excuse me, in the jail, but also in the U-Haul storage units that we've been renting for a couple of months. And we finished painting a few things, trim, et cetera, et cetera. Cove Base went down this week, a long time waiting for that. So anyway, I can't thank Alex Byas enough with Polar North. He's been great to work with. So we're getting close. And the show that's up right now, Reindeer Man, has been very, very successful. We had a great opening. The paintings and etchings that are on display are from our executive director, Alex Radlinsky. Lots Alexes this month. And the fellow that he worked with in Fairbanks, Reindeer George, I cannot remember his last name. It's about six syllables, so I wouldn't do well with it anyway. He has a reindeer business. It's not like Crash the Reindeer. This is a business. This is where reindeer sausage comes from, one place, anyway. So the paintings, the large paintings and etchings that are on the wall are very, his style is very classic. Think Rembrandt, that's kind of the style we're looking at there. They're extremely well done. And we had a lot of people at the first Thursday opening, and then they did a special talk the following week. Had quite a few people show up for that. They did an excellent job discussing what goes on with the whole process from start to finish with the reindeer. And the cards that Alex Radlinsky wrote out for his works that are on the wall are, explain exactly what's going on. They're very well written. They're a little bit longer than the usual card you see by a painting, but they're worth spending the time going around the room and reading those. Because it's like, I mean, you will be glad that you did. Because you will learn a whole lot more about reindeer and also what goes into the raising of them. And they, it is a farming business. They feed the reindeers and they're out grazing. It's not a herd running around. They're absolutely controlled and managed. So that's what I've had going on as far as the Art Center is concerned. Little by little, we're moving along. And there was something I was going, I'd forgotten something I was going to tell. Oh, I know, this is a biggie. This also has to do with exposure around the state. You know, we got a grant from the Alaska City Council on the Arts. And it went, the money from that went to about two, three different things. And Alex Radlinsky, again, is an incredibly talented guy. In the past, he's done a lot of different things for his young age. And one of those things was working for a very techy outfit and developing, working with technology. So, you know, we don't know all the things that he's done. We're finding them out as time goes on. So we thought, well, we'll do a thank you something to the State Council on the Arts. He made a video for it. We all are in the video, all the board members, and we're saying thank you. And we're saying thank you, and thank you. And it's very cute, it's very funny, it's charming, I have to say, even though I'm in it, and that's not the charming part. But we sent that to them. And the reason I'm telling you that primarily is that is a Kenai event, that they that are so impressed that they linked it on their newsletter that they send to everybody in the state, that this is from the Kenai Art Center. So we are getting that kind of spin off of it. And you may get a video, too. Questions?
Any questions from Councilmember Winger?
I just want to say thank you for holding in with us till 11 o'clock. Thank you. I seen you wiggle in over there, so thank you for holding in.
Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thanks. And I have to say, I really agree with you about the reindeer exhibit art from Alex Radlinsky. I had the opportunity to see it, it is pretty amazing.
It's the real thing.
So definitely worth checking out. And it was great to see that he had sold several of his paintings and etchings, you know, already.
Yeah, a few of the paintings, probably mostly from the show that he had immediately before this. It's very lucky that he had that show in Fairbanks after we canceled the Harvest Talk Show we normally have this month. So that fundraiser is gone because he just couldn't, couldn't manage it because of COVID for various reasons. And so we said, Alex, bring that show down. Well, it's not an easy thing because he was all crated up. He made two, three trips. He's not done making trips to Fairbanks where he's from originally, by the way. And some of them will have to go back because they were sold to some people in Fairbanks, the paintings. And he sold a lot of etchings, so it's been a good run so far. And there'll be more, we'll have more as time goes on. So thanks for your work tonight.
It's not 11 o'clock yet. So we can cover, but I did enjoy Alex's work. I came there for the opening, and it was, it was different than what you'd normally have. And it was, the other thing that was different, not only the work, which was very good, was different, but it told a story from the left all the way around the room, you know, raising.
That was not the opening of the show for this month. That was the talk that they gave, the separate talk.
Yeah.
If that's what you're.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Yeah, they did a great job entertaining you. And, you know, Alex went up there and worked with him. He participated in all the phases of those reindeer's life, almost all, anyway. And, I mean, he was right in there dealing with the males and the females and the little ones and so forth. He lived it as well as painted it. Very interesting. Anything else?
Thanks, Marion. Is there anybody else from the general public that'd like to address the council at this time?
I just wanted to mention a couple of quick things. Thanks for improving the replat of that, just kind of cleaning up some old plots there. It's good to see that area is starting to get some revitalization, I think. I've talked with Melish, John Melish over there, and he's got other plans for hopefully trying to assume more property and make that, clean it up around there pretty nice. It's looking good. Couple of quick things for about the marketing aspects of things. I'm not sure if any of you are aware of Tim Dillon, author of EDD. He did a really amazing video. They did a lot of time and effort. It's not so much marketing just Kenai, but they did a whole video, a little marketing plan for the Kenai Peninsula, trying to encourage people to move to Kenai Peninsula and maybe businesses down there. And if you haven't seen their video, you can go on their website, check it out, it's a little clip video. They're going to be starting to actually play those up in Anchorage at the airports and different little monitors on different screens and stuff around there. If you get a chance to check it out, it's a really cool video. It might be something to talk to with our marketing gentleman about maybe trying to link in to just information about the Kenai Peninsula and all the statistics about everything to draw businesses down here. I think it was a really good one to do. And then another resource would be the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development, not them, but the Tourism and Marketing Council. They did with the printed, what they got, they used to do the little passports. They might still be doing them. They had some pretty interesting research they did about the cost of the passports, the hard printed, and what they were really getting out of it. And I know before, I'm not sure if they're even really working that much. They kind of disbanded a little bit. There might be only one or two employees. But before we start marketing a lot more of the hard print, they were starting to lean towards more of the digital copies and maybe doing like an app or something like that to get away from the sheer cost of hard copy and hard print. It's just so expensive and what they're getting for the bang of the buck might not be as effective as maybe digital media that could be displayed on a computer screen like this at some of those different areas. Where somebody can just log in and see a scan and hit an app and it brings up a City of Kenai app with information on it or something like that. But those are some information. Might be good to reach out to that particular organization who's done a lot of that research, spent a lot of that money already. Just some different ideas that have been out there that might be good to look in when it comes to the marketing aspect of things and monopolizing what people have already invested for their research to, so we don't have to redo the same study again.
Yeah, and just, yeah, Tim had come and presented on that, just, I can't remember which meeting it was, fairly recently.
Yeah, I know, they just got it out.
It was the last one, yeah. Yep, it was good. Yeah. Thanks, Alex. Anybody else I'd like to say anything to the council at this time? Floor's open.
Anybody on Zoom, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, very well, we'll go to council comments. Councilmember Raskin.
I want to thank everybody who worked on amending the conditional use permit ordinance. And I look forward to working further on that. Also, thank you to everyone who worked on the election one. That one was, that was pretty long and painful. We got lots of stuff accomplished tonight. I got the opportunity to go to the Historical Society Sunday afternoon. And they talked, they told the story of the two murders that occurred at the school board election in 1918 in Kenai. It was pretty interesting. That, that kind of history always fascinates me. And just a, just a little thing of interest, I flew to Anchorage Sunday night. And while I was in the airport, I just happened, a guy just started talking to me about, he works at the Pebble Mine and had lived in Fairbanks for 20 years. And he moved, he and his wife decided to move to Kenai. And he said the first year that he was here, what they saved on their heating bill paid for his airplane tickets to go back and forth to work. And he, he said that Fairbanks has now passed a bunch of laws. They can only burn wood at certain times, and they have to burn fuel oil at certain times. And so be really happy that we have natural gas, affordable heat. And that concludes my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Winger.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I just would like to say, I was participating in the audience for the candidate forum today. I'd like to thank the three of you that showed up and gave your inputs. You know, we have some great candidates running, so, you know, great conversations come from having a good selection of candidates. But I'd like to say thank you again for putting yourself out there. I know those forms aren't easy. Sitting through these long meetings is going to be an adjustment as well. And so I just would like to say thank you guys for showing up and doing everything you're doing on your campaigns. And then, you know, we had some great conversations tonight when it came to the conditional use and the election ordinances. And I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Malloy for all your work on that and working with me on those. And then I would just like to, again, make mention that the Kenai River Marathon Race is the 26th, and they are desperately in need of volunteers. They need people that are willing to ride bikes and follow the runners, people doing water stations. It really takes everybody coming together to make that a successful event. We don't, they didn't have a number as far as how many people had registered at this point. But, you know, they got over 200 last year in the COVID year. So they're expecting a good turnout for that. And then I would just like to say that with the change of the seasons and the high winds that we've been getting recently, just to remind people to clear their dead hazard trees. Facebook after those winds was just riddled and trees that fell on houses, fences, and cars. So if you do have dead or hazard leaning trees, definitely look at removing those going into the winter season. And I'd just like to thank everyone again for the hard work that went in tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Petty.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. I would like to say how proud I was to be living in Kenai on Labor Day and saw the beautiful flags that were flying in our city. And I wanted to thank Parks and Rec for doing that. Also, it touched my heart, and I wanted to thank the Fire Department specifically for their continual remembrance and the beautiful memorial that they put together every September the 11th. And if you missed that, I would tell you to put it on your radar for next year so that we never forget the sacrifice and the attack on our nation and that we will always remember those who suffered and gave their lives for our dear freedoms here. Also, I would like to remind everyone that the Silver Salmon Derby is going on. And if you haven't put your hook in the water, this would be a great time to do that. And it's a great event that's here in the community and would encourage everyone to participate. Great work was done tonight. I thank all the community members that came out and helped us do the work of the city so that we can live in harmony and peace and have a great city here. So that ends my comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Glenn Denny.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, I'm glad to get this land management plan, the draft for 2021. I think, I think this will open up a lot of opportunities for cash flow for the city, but also opportunities for individuals or corporations who wish to come and purchase land and invest in our city. I, too, went to the candidate forum today, and I was well pleased with the questions and the response and the attendance and the, and the audience. And we do have a fine group of candidates, and all are to be congratulated. And, and I can see that my retirement plan is before me here and you and others. And I'm just glad to see well-qualified, interested people, younger people, involved in this, in this contemplating getting involved in the situation. It's a lot of work. You have to be a good student, you have to pay attention, and I can do it. But maybe someone else would want to, too, and I can work in my coin collection. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Denny. Vice Mayor Malloy.
Thank you, Mayor Gabriel. Yeah, I want to thank everybody that came to the meeting tonight and, you know, provided a public comment to us on the conditional use permit ordinance and on the election code ordinance. And I want to thank, again, the city planner, city attorney, and city clerk for working with me on that. Also want to thank my colleagues. You put a lot of work into both of those ordinances. I appreciate your kind comments, Councilmember Winger. I would say that you certainly did your due diligence on the election code ordinance in particular. And, and, you know, and I appreciate the dialogue that council's having also, you know, from different meetings, back and forth with the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding, you know, Title 14 and Chapter 20 and maybe some issues that people have been talking about a long time. And I think it's great that you're all going to continue looking at that. Also, I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Petty's comments. I did go and attend the 9/11 bell ringing ceremony that Kenai Fire Department had, which was with the, with the, you know, all the flags out there as well as their memorial to, you know, fallen firefighter that they had there temporarily. And it was a really, really good ceremony. This was the 20th, and as Ms. Petty said, they've been doing it every year. And Chief Pryor, you know, made a really good, you know, present, you know, informal presentation discussion with, you know, Deputy Chief Anderson and the firefighters that were there. And it was also attended by the Central Emergency Services pastor, who I think his last name is Franklin, you know, who said some prayers. But the main point that Chief Pryor was making was kind of, you know, reiterating for younger firefighters who are maybe really young at the time of the event, you know, what the event was like and how it's important to, you know, never forget that. And, and so, you know, again, I want to thank him for doing that. That was a really good ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Knox, then?
Thank you. Been an 18-hour day for me, so keep it kind of brief. But I did go to the Kenai Historical Society meeting and enjoyed Clark Fair's presentation on the murders in Kenai in 1918. And elections were a little bit different then with no law and all that. They, after the first shooting, they, they didn't stop voting, they just drew a sheet and kept going. But that's how, you know, what do you do? And then, anyway, the story went on. It was, it was, it was pretty in-depth and had a lot of different villains involved and characters. And shame, oh, the room was actually full, so there were a lot of people that did come see that. I did go to the candidate forum today, and very good questions, too, I thought. And I felt comfortable with the three individuals that were there tonight, today. And I appreciate your putting yourself out there. And last but not least. And last but not least, Bob Freitas, I'm sure you're going to miss Bob, and after 30 years. One thing about Bob is, is that, you know, even though he'd been doing this job, however, for so long, he was tireless all the time. I mean, weekends, evenings, he was there and enjoying himself. And I've always appreciated that of Bob. So, anyway, I'm sure he'll be enjoying retirement soon. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no executive session or pending items. See no other business before this party. We are adjourned.